Bonjour tout le monde et bienvenue. Bienvenue à tous, bonjour. Pour ceux qui sont en mesure, s'il vous plaît, souvenez-vous d'un moment de réflexion personnelle. Merci. A commencer notre réunion aujourd'hui, et en nom de conseil de la ville d'Autreuil, je souhaite reconnaître que l'Autreuil est construit sur un territoire anishnaabe-algonquin non cédé. Les peuples de la nation anishnaabe-algonquin ont vécu sur ce territoire depuis des millénaires. Leur culture et présence ont nourri et continuent de nourrir cette terre. La ville d'Autreuil honore les peuples et la terre de la nation anishnaabe-algonquin, et honore toutes les premières nations, les peuples Inuits et Métis, et leurs précieux contributions passées et actuelles à cette terre. Juste avant de faire le call de rôle, je sais que le conseiller Kelly voudrait exprimer une gratitude concernant la pluie récente. Conseiller Kelly?
Merci beaucoup maire pour l'opportunité d'adresser mes collègues, les membres du personnel de la ville, ainsi que les constituants de la ville de West Carlton-March and right across the city of Ottawa and the region. L'été toujours vient avec de l'anxiété élevée pour beaucoup dans les quartiers 5 qui vivent dans ou près de la rivière de l'Autreuil. La fraîcheurée d'été est toujours quelque chose qui est surveillée, mais cette année, de nombreux indicateurs de pluie potentielles étaient là, jusqu'à janvier, quand les conditions de la neige miroiront les conditions en même temps en 2019, quand de nombreuses maisons résidentielles ont été détruites et les vies ont été arrachées par une pluie record. Donc, lorsque la autorité de conservation du Vallet de Mississippi a publié une avertissement de pluie pour le Lower Ottawa, sur les esprits de nombreuses résidences, les esprits de nombreuses résidences ont rapidement changé les luttes de 2017 et 2019. Il y avait beaucoup d'appréhension et de peur quand l'avertissement a été publié, mais ce qui est arrivé ensuite était extrêmement encourageant et aimant pour moi, surtout comme conseiller nouveau qui doit faire quelque chose comme ça pour la première fois. Le centre d'opération dirigé par Beth Gooding était formidable, et je voudrais reconnaître la forte direction et la guidance des opérations sur le terrain par Jim Lethbridge, qui travaillait jour et nuit, tous les jours la semaine dernière, ainsi que les week-ends pour assurer que les communautés affectées soient soutenues et qu'il y a toujours suffisamment de fournissements à disposition pour continuer nos opérations de réponse à la pluie. La ville a montré une volonté et une capacité de être flexibles et adapter aux besoins changeants des résidents et des volontaires. L'effort et l'investissement de la ville d'Autreuil et de son personnel dans la supporte des gens pendant ce temps difficile étaient exceptionnels et très appréciés par les résidents de la ville de West Carlton-March. À mes collègues autour de cette table, merci. Merci à ceux qui sont conseillers, ainsi que la maire qui a contacté avec des mots d'encouragement et d'advice, et un très spécial remerciement aux conseillers qui ont pris du temps à sortir vers les quartiers 5 avec leurs membres de famille et leurs équipes, ou par eux-mêmes, pour aider à remplir les sacs de sable et construire des murs. Je voudrais reconnaître le conseiller Hill, le conseiller Divine, le conseiller Lowe, le conseiller Plot, Plant, et le conseiller Carr pour avoir fait le voyage vers le quartier et aider les gens avec les efforts. Je dois aussi remercier le conseiller Curry pour avoir aidé à coordonner les efforts de sable rempli par les étudiants de l'école de la collège à Canada Nord. Et je peux vous assurer que cela a fait une grande différence pour les gens pendant un temps stressant et difficile. Et voir les conseillers de autres quartiers sortir était un autre rappel que la ville est là pour les résidents quand ils le doivent. Enfin, je dois remercier tous les résidents et les volontaires et les entreprises locales qui ont participé à ces efforts, y compris mon ancienne école de l'école de West Carlton Secondaire où les étudiants remplissaient plus de 9000 sacs de sable en un seul jour. Quand quelque chose comme ça se passe, il prend plus que juste la ville et quelques troupes pleines de sable pour aider les gens. Il faut que beaucoup de gens donnent leur temps personnel, font le travail dur de remplir et de transporter les sacs de sable, et le travail de renversement de construire des murs. Il faut des dons, des fournissements, de la nourriture, et bien sûr, beaucoup et beaucoup de café pour maintenir ces efforts en cours. À tous les gens qui sont venus, non seulement de partout dans la ville, mais à travers l'Est de l'Ontario et le Occident du Québec, pour remplir, donner de l'argent ou faire et livrer de la nourriture, nous n'aurions pas pu passer par là sans vous. Je voudrais reconnaître et remercier la Réserve de la catastrophe de West Carlton pour leur travail incroyable en coordonnant les volontaires ainsi que les opérations volontaires. Votre expérience de pluies de 2017 et 2019 ainsi que d'autres disasters naturels dans notre région ont été invalables dans les efforts de la semaine dernière. Ce n'est jamais un plaisir de combattre la pluie, mais c'était un plaisir de travailler avec votre organisation. Même si j'ai hâte que nous soyons parmi les pires de la pluie, nous restons vigilants comme communauté et le centre d'opérations d'urgence reste actif. La semaine prochaine sera importante comme nous continuons à monitorer les niveaux de l'eau et ce qui pourrait venir de la partie nord de la basse. Mais merci aux efforts de ceux dans notre communauté, la ville d'Autreuil ainsi que mes collègues conseillers, je suis confiant comme je l'ai toujours été, que si plus d'eau arrive à notre port, la ville d'Autreuil et la communauté seront prêtes à agir si nécessaire. Merci encore à tous ceux qui sont impliqués dans ces efforts.
Merci conseiller Kelly. Merci pour votre direction et votre communauté en répondant à cette crise. Et je pense que nous avons vu dans les dernières semaines un nombre de exemples de conseillers aider d'autres conseillers dans leurs quartiers parce qu'il y a eu des problèmes de charge électrique et de pluie et d'autres défis. Donc, je suis reconnaissant à tous vous pour votre collaboration et soutien mutuels. Donc, merci. All right, je vais demander au adjointe policier maintenant de faire le call de rôle.
Conseiller Lulov.
Président.
Conseiller Dudas.
Président.
Conseiller Hill.
Ici.
Conseiller Curry.
Ici.
Conseiller Kelly.
Président.
Conseiller Gower.
Ici.
Conseiller Kavanaugh.
Président.
Conseiller Johnson. Conseiller Divine.
Ici.
Conseiller Bradley.
Ici.
Conseiller Tierney.
Président.
Conseiller Plant.
Ici.
Conseiller King.
Ici.
Conseiller Trossard.
Ici.
Conseiller Leeper.
Bonjour.
Conseiller Brockington.
Ici.
Conseiller Menard.
Président.
Conseiller Carr.
Ici.
Conseiller Kits.
Ici.
Conseiller DeRousse.
Ici.
Conseiller Brown.
Ici.
Conseiller DeRush.
Ici.
Conseiller Hubley. Conseiller Lowe.
Ici.
Maire Sackliff.
Ici.
Vous avez un forum maire.
Merci. Allons passer à la confirmation des minutes de la réunion de conseil de l'août 12. Les minutes ont-elles été apprises? Y a-t-il des déclarations d'intérêt? Ok, des communications ont été reçues, y compris des réponses à des enquêtes qui sont attachées. Je ne suis pas conscient de n'importe quel regret qui a été formulé. Motion pour introduire les rapports, conseiller DeRousse.
Merci monsieur maire. Le rapport de la Commission de la santé de l'Autreuil intitulé "Le rapport annuel de la santé de l'Autreuil 2022", le rapport du panel de sélection de la police intitulé "L'apparition de l'agence de services policiers", "Rapport de la comité de heritage pour l'éventualité de préparation et de service protecteur", "Rapport 3, rapport de la commission de changement climatique", "Rapport de la comité de housing", "Rapport 7, rapport de la commission de transit", "Rapport de la commission de transport", et les rapports de la police intitulés "最新的更新", "Répondements de conseil et motions pour la période terminée le 21 avril 2023", et "Summarisation des submissions orales et écrites de publics pour les items sujets à l'Acte de planification", "Reclamations requises à la réunion de la ville de conseil de l'août 12 2023, reçues et considérées", "Que les règles de procédure soient suspendues pour recevoir et considérer un rapport d'information du directeur général de la gestion de la maison de housing, communauté et service social intitulé "2023-26 allocation de la prévention de la maladie provinciale", programme de financement afin que le conseil ait l'opportunité de recevoir un bref et poser des questions aux employés en temps et lieu.
All right, merci conseiller DeRousse. Est-ce que c'est transmis? Merci. Item 10 est le rapport annuel de la Commission de la santé de l'Autreuil, et je sais qu'il y a un ou deux questions concernées de ça, donc nous ferons la partie until later. Item numéro 11 est le dernier update, 11.1, le dernier update sur les enquêtes et les motions pour la période terminée le 21 avril. Est-ce que c'est reçu? Item 11.2 est l'apparition de l'agence de services policiers. Donc, la recommandation du rapport est que, plus en délibérations du panel de sélection, conseil 1, approuve l'apparition de Gail Beck à l'agence de services policiers avec sa termine effective selon l'approuvée du conseil pour la termine de conseil de 2022 à 2026, et 2, recommande que l'agence de services policiers appuie Gail Beck comme présidente pour la termine de conseil de 2022 à 2026. Je vais juste prendre un moment ici pour remercier les membres du comité de sélection, le conseiller Curry et le conseiller King. Il y avait plus de 100 applicants, je crois, pour servir comme représentant de la communauté sur l'agence de services policiers, et comme vous le savez, nous avions indiqué précédemment que nous espérons que cette personne serait alors approuvée comme présidente par la même agence de police. Dr. Beck est un individu outstanding avec une réputation formidable dans notre communauté, qui a servi dans d'autres boards, y compris l'Algonquin College, et a eu une expérience de gouvernance significative, et est aussi leader dans l'aspect de la santé mentale, évidemment, comme psychiatre en chef à l'hôpital Royal Ottawa. Elle porte un certain nombre de rôles de direction à l'hôpital et a été un advocate passionné pour la santé mentale des jeunes dans notre communauté depuis longtemps. Et je pense que nous ferons un travail formidable en tant que présidente si la même agence de police choisit de la faire la présidente selon notre recommandation. Et je pense aussi qu'il y a une grande opportunité ici d'avoir quelqu'un avec ce genre d'expérience dans la communauté comme expert en santé mentale à ce moment-là, servant sur l'agence de services policiers. Je veux aussi prendre un moment pour remercier Suzanne Vallikay, qui a été le citoyen, l'appartient de la ville à l'agence de police et qui a servi comme adjointe interne depuis la dernière termine de conseil. Quand Suzanne a été demandée de rejoindre la board après avoir servi précédemment, elle a probablement pensé que ça serait jusqu'à la fin de la termine de conseil. Elle ne pensait probablement pas qu'elle serait entrée dans le rôle de présidente. Elle l'a fait avec beaucoup d'énergie et d'enthousiasme, et beaucoup d'intégrité et de pensée. Et elle a endurent quelques extensions à cette interne mandat parce que ça nous a pris un peu plus de temps pour compléter le processus de sélection que nous avons anticipé. Donc, je veux remercier Suzanne pour sa excellente service à notre communauté et pour toute la travaille souvent sans remerciement que elle a apporté à ce rôle. Donc, je voulais juste fournir quelques remarques à ce sujet. Mais s'il y a des commentaires, je suis ouvert à ça, mais sinon, nous pouvons juste passer à l'approuver de cette recommandation. Transmis? All right, merci à tous. Allons passer à l'item 12, le rapport de la comité de heritage. Item 12.1 est la désignation de mansions Iona, 11/23 à 11/31, Wallington Street West, sous la partie 4 de l'Acte de heritage de l'Ontario, et la recommandation du comité que le conseil issue un avertissement pour désigner cette propriété selon la déclaration de la culture de valeur culturelle attachée à document 5. Est-ce que c'est transmis? All right. Item 12.2, il y a des motions concernées de ça, donc nous ferons la partie. Item 12.3 est l'actualité et les options de conservation pour la pompe Hintonburg. Le conseil a reçu le following rapport pour information. Est-ce que c'est reçu? Item 13, comité de préparation et de services protecteurs, comité 13.1 est le bylaw et services régulatifs 2021 et 2022, rapports annuels. Est-ce que c'est reçu? Item 14 est la commission de changement climatique, item 14.1, plan master de changement climatique, dernier update. Y a-t-il ces recommandations transmises?
Monsieur maire, je souhaite décent sur item 14.1, item 5.
Ok. Merci conseiller Brown. Donc, c'est item 14.1. Item 5. Ok. Item 15 sur l'agenda est le rapport de la comité de housing, item 15.1 est le ministère de zonage pour 4085 Strandherd Drive. Est-ce que la recommandation du comité est transmise? Item 16 est le rapport de la commission de transit, 16.1. Le conseil a reçu le moniteur régulatif de light rail et officier de compliance annuel attaché à document 1. Est-ce que c'est reçu? Et item 16.2 sont les recommandations pour le moniteur régulatif de light rail et officier de compliance, est-ce que c'est transmis? All right, item 17 est le comité de transport, et nous ferons la discussion. Item 18 est l'item que nous avons ajouté à l'agenda concernant l'allocation de la prévention de la maladie provinciale, donc nous ferons la partie. Item 19 est l'agenda de consentement global. Est-ce que l'agenda de consentement global est transmis?
Monsieur maire, pouvez-vous enregistrer mon décent sur 19.1? Merci.
Ok, le conseiller DeRush et le conseiller DeRose sont décent sur 19.1. Mais sinon, transmis? All right. Pardon? Conseiller Lulov aussi? Ok, merci. Donc, revenons au board de santé. Est-ce que Dr. Etches est ici? Je sais qu'elle a eu une engagement précédent avant de pouvoir assister à la réunion. Ok, donc nous allons nous tenir à ça pour le moment, et nous reviendrons sur item 10 plus tard quand Dr. Etches est ici. Donc, nous allons passer à l'item 12.2, qui est la évaluation de la culture de la ponte canadienne du rail du 1er janvier. Et conseiller King, je crois que vous avez une motion.
Merci votre adoration. J'ai une motion à amender. Les collègues, à la dernière réunion, le comité de heritage a approuvé une motion avancée par un ancien membre public de l'agence de la commission, amendant un rapport d'employés pour recommander que le conseil poursuive la désignation de la ponte du rail du 1er janvier sous la partie 4 de l'Acte de heritage de l'Ontario. En tant que président de l'agence, je n'ai pas soutenu cette motion puisque, comme les membres du personnel de la ville, je crois que c'est premature d'approuver la désignation de la culture à ce moment-là. Je crois que un processus procédural approprié inclut le personnel de la ville d'abord effectuant une évaluation complète environnementale de la ponte. Même si l'agence de heritage a déterminé que la ponte a une valeur culturelle, je concerne leur opinion que une étude de rénewement devrait être conduite pour obtenir toutes les données pertinentes et examiner toutes les options avant une recommandation d'employé à l'agence et au conseil concernant la désignation. Un rapport d'évaluation en 2018 a conclu que la ponte était en condition pire en général et présentait deux options: une réhabilitation majeure ou une remplacement de structure. Seulement une évaluation comprehensive de les deux options par un processus de évaluation environnementale municipal peut déterminer la meilleure façon de l'aller. Le processus d'évaluation environnementale est important puisque il fournit l'opportunité pour les deux agents d'assiette et de heritage de collectivement appliquer leur expertise complète pour déterminer le coût, l'utilité et la faisabilité de les deux options. Le processus d'évaluation environnementale est aussi important puisque il permet une consultation publique significative avec les résidents puisque la ponte sert à plusieurs communautés et est une importance pedestrian et cyclique. Il est important de noter que l'agence de heritage assume son rôle concernant la désignation de la culture d'une manière très professionnelle et diligente et a désigné près 90 immobiliers de propriété propriétaire de la ville. Il n'y a pas de double standard concernant la désignation de propriété propriétaire de la ville. Il y a seulement de bonnes normes professionnelles qui considèrent les évaluations culturelles et techniques d'une manière holistique. Consequentemment, je vais introduire une motion pour restaurer la recommandation d'employé originale pour assurer une restauration d'un processus procédural comprehensive qui est conçu pour comprendre pleinement les résultats et les évaluations de l'évaluation environnementale et ses études associées avant que aucune recommandation et décisions concernant la désignation ne soient faites. Que le recommandation de l'agence soit amendée pour remplacer la recommandation 3 avec la recommandation originale comme suit: informer l'agence de heritage, le comité de heritage, sur les résultats de l'évaluation environnementale municipale et fournir une recommandation concernant la désignation sous la partie 4 de l'Acte de heritage de l'Ontario. Merci maire.
Merci conseiller King. Conseiller Kelly?
Merci maire. Je suis vraiment perturbé par cette motion et je me sens obligé de parler de ça aujourd'hui. Et je sais qu'il y a divers points qui ont été discutés à l'agence sur pourquoi ou pourquoi ça ne devrait pas être désigné une propriété de heritage. Et vous savez, ceux-là étaient tous évoqués à l'agence et des décisions ont été faites et l'agence a voté. Donc, je pense que c'est une chose de venir ici aujourd'hui et garder ça sur l'agenda et peut-être demander à vos collègues de vote d'une manière différente que l'agence l'a fait. Mais venir ici aujourd'hui et amender la recommandation réelle qui a été faite par l'agence est étonnant pour moi et encore plus parce qu'elle est faite par le membre qui, je suppose, a travaillé assez dur pour établir cette même comité et parce que l'importance de la culture de la ville. Et je savais, vous savez, je ne savais pas pourquoi je me suis appuyé sur cette comité, mais j'ai embrassé parce que je adore la histoire locale, vous savez, et l'histoire de la ville d'Autreuil est très importante en préservant ça. Et je pense que les rails et les connexions entre les différentes communautés existant comme un résultat de ces rails sont importants à préserver. Et une autre chose qui m'a vraiment perturbé en écoutant comment cette conversation a été jouée est que les votes des membres appuyés de l'agence semblaient d'être mis en valeur moins important que les votes des autres membres de l'agence qui ont été élu. Et j'aurais quelques questions à la mouvresse sur pourquoi ces gens sont sur l'agence et quelles valeurs ils portent sur l'agence si nous allons juste renverser les votes qui sont soutenus par eux. Je pense que ça send un signal terrible aux gens qui se mettent dans notre ville et se soumettent leur temps pour aider nos comités et informer nos débats. Et comme je l'ai dit, je pense qu'il y a beaucoup de raisons techniques et arguments à être faits pour ou contre. Mais je sens très fortement que la décision de l'agence de faire cette recommandation devrait être la recommandation qui vient au conseil. Et si quelqu'un veut débattre à conseil et avoir un vote là, ça serait la manière la plus appropriée de le faire. Je ne pense pas que ça send un bon signal à les gens et à ceux qui mettent leur propre effort et pensée dans la prise de décisions. Je comprends que le personnel de la ville est très bien informé sur ces questions et qu'ils sont experts. Et je ne pense pas qu'en 100% de la fois, nous allons nous raccorder avec eux. Et donc, je ne pense pas que le président concordant avec le personnel devrait changer la recommandation de l'agence. Et le vote qui a été fait à l'agence devrait être reflété dans la recommandation ici. Merci beaucoup maire.
Ok, merci conseiller Kelly. Juste pour la clarté, le amendement, vous savez, le propos d'amendement évidemment doit être traité d'abord avant de traiter la motion originale. Donc, c'est juste cette séquence que nous devons suivre. Conseiller Plant.
Oui, merci monsieur le maire. Je voulais échoir ce que le conseiller Clarke a dit sur, vous savez, les membres non conseiliers de certains comités ayant plus ou moins de autorité sur un problème que d'autres. Je suis aussi très inconfortable avec cette discussion. Nous avons des membres de la communauté qui sont des membres de la police, qui sont des membres de la santé publique, qui sont des membres de la bureau de la bibliothèque, et leur entrée et opinion, je crois, devraient être aussi précieux que ceux de nous assis autour de la table. Et enfin, comme quelqu'un qui a une ponte qui, pendant 47 ans, a été laissée dans cette limbe juridicienne, je parle de la Ponte de McDonald Cartier et les troupes sur King Edward, je pense que c'est le meilleur que nous ripping cette band-aide et que nous donnons la désignation de la culture qu'elle mérite. Parce que vous ne voulez pas être dans la position où je trouve que moi-même et mes résidents nous trouvons, où les gens se bavent sur qui va payer quoi, qui va mettre quoi où. Ça fait vraiment, ça fait vraiment le problème beaucoup plus compliqué si nous ne le traitons pas à la source. Donc, merci beaucoup.
Merci Conseiller Plant. Conseiller Carr. Ok, conseiller Menard?
Je pensais que le conseiller Brockington était devant moi. Désolé. J'ai changé d'ordre.
Ok, désolé, je suis... Ça est représenté deux façons différentes sur ma fenêtre, donc je ne sais pas toujours l'ordre. Donc, ok, conseiller Brockington, puis conseiller Menard.
Merci maire. Premièrement, je ne suis pas sûr pourquoi nous avons commencé à parler de la valeur de nos employés publics à cette comité. Je suis juste passé avec mes collègues un processus d'apparition à vérifier les gens qui ont été appuyés sur cette comité, et ils sont très professionnels et expérimentaux et partenaires égaux sur cette comité. Ils apprécient leur service, ils appréciaient travailler sur cette comité la dernière termine de conseil et connaissant les quatre employés vrais professionnels qui ont fourni de significant entrée et valeur à la former sous-comité. Et je suis sûr que les quatre personnes qui ont juste été appuyées le feront aussi. Donc, je l'apprécie certainement leur service. Et nous avons eu les quatre employés citoyens assis dans la galerie la dernière fois quand nous avons débattu le Château Laurier. Les quatre ont voté contre la procédure avec les plans de Château Laurier et le conseil l'a redessiné. Le conseil a décidé de aller de son côté. Donc, c'est procéduellement correct pour le conseiller King de faire cette motion. Et si les gens ne l'aiment pas, ils peuvent voter contre ça, et nous pouvons revenir à ce que le sous-comité a proposé. Donc, mon question est en fait pour le personnel. Il y a des avantages et des avantages à ces deux options aujourd'hui. Il y a des avantages à désigner la ponte maintenant, et il y a des cons à désigner la ponte maintenant. Il y a des avantages à revenir à la motion qui est sur le plan maintenant, et il y a des cons à faire ça maintenant. Donc, je pense que ce que j'ai entendu dans l'introduction du conseiller King est que avant une désignation est faite, il y a de significant valeur dans la procédure avec une évaluation complète environnementale de la ponte pour recouvrir la tête autour de la situation de la ponte. Et je comprends une étude de rénewement qui doit être conduite d'abord aussi. Donc, je souhaite que le personnel commente sur, vous savez, la recommandation originale n'était pas désignée. Évidemment, l'agence avait une différence d'opinion sur ça. Mais je veux que le personnel elaborate pourquoi cette évaluation environnementale devrait être conduite d'abord, pourquoi c'est si important avant que nous prenions la désignation. Merci.
Merci monsieur maire, et je pense que le conseiller Brockington a résumé la position du personnel. Je souhaite demander à le conseiller Curry et Collins d'expanser.
Merci monsieur Herwire. Je vais commencer d'abord, puis mon collègue John va parler du processus d'élection. Donc, concentrant sur le président de heritage, à travers le processus d'élection, nous aurons trois livrages. Nous aurons un rapport de évaluation de la culture, une évaluation de la culture impacte, et un plan de conservation sorti du processus d'élection. Donc, ça vraiment guide le personnel en termes des options de conservation, options de coût et options de lifespan des pontes existantes. Donc, nous croyons que ces trois composantes sont essentielles pour prendre une décision complètement informée. Je vais passer à Mr. John pour élaborer le processus d'élection.
Merci monsieur maire. Le processus d'évaluation environnementale, beaucoup de vous vous connaîrez, et l'intention est vraiment d'explorer tout, chaque aspect de l'asset et la nécessité qui est traitée. Et dans ce cas, la culture est l'une des questions et caractéristiques de cette structure. Ça joue de nombreuses autres rôles à la communauté, à l'acte de transport. Et c'est une lierre très longue et importante dans notre réseau. Comme la culture est une caractéristique, il y a plus d'informations à apprendre sur la culture, mais il y a plus d'informations à apprendre sur les autres rôles et objectifs que la ponte sert. L'évaluation environnementale documentera toute cette information, nous ferons des études techniques. C'est, comme vous l'avez mentionné, une opportunité incroyable pour le public pour voir comment ça, comment ça les aide. Et dans l'analyse des options, ça nous permet d'ouvrir plus largement que la localité de la ponte. Par exemple, il y a beaucoup d'implications sur chacune des options. L'information présentée au comité de la culture a focusé sur l'information limitée qui a été préparée dans l'évaluation structurelle de 2018. Et la prise de conscience de ça est le élément de coût. Mais il y a beaucoup plus à informer, et c'est une grosse dépense de coût. Quelle que soit la voie choisie. Et je recommande, nous avons proposé à la comité de la culture que pour considérer cette investissement, que nous soyons complètement informés sur tous les éléments et permettre une participation complète du public pour soutenir toute décision est faite.
Donc, est-ce que la première préoccupation ou crainte est que la condition de la ponte est actuellement dans une situation comme celle-ci que ça a besoin d'intervention immédiate pour préserver ce qui reste et que les迟延 pourrait plus amener à la condition des restes de cette ponte? Est-ce que c'est le pensée derrière une désignation immédiate? Parce que je pense qu'il y a de grand prix dans la procédure avec les études et les évaluations que vous avez déliné. Ça miroirera ce que nous faisons avec d'autres propriétés, ou dans ce cas, structures. Mais est-ce que le risque de ne pas désigner maintenant, un plus tard, qui pourrait plus vous savez, diminuer la qualité des structures? Est-ce que c'est la raison numéro un?
Monsieur maire, laissez-moi... Um, Mr. Mayor, let me assure councillor that council that the bridge is safe. The structural assessment that was done in twenty eighteen is part of our routine evaluation of all of our structures. It continues to be safe. As part of our longer perspective on planning investments and maintaining continuity of service. We plan a few years ahead. And so these needs. Coming up for action and and decision making in twenty twenty-three is a reasonable and perfectly safe. Um, there's no risk to users at all. The delay that or the additional time. That we'll need to do an environmental assessment is also within the tolerable um service life of this bridge. It takes time to execute these repairs, and so that's really the site that we have. It has had um minimal maintenance. Now, I almost shouldn't say minimal. It has had the maintenance that it has needed to preserve its safe operation. And those have been um preserving always the operation of the bridge. We haven't, we haven't had to close it, which. I'll take this chance to say a rehabilitation would would close the bridge for for likely two years.
Thank you for, thank you for that. And colleagues, I'll just note that I will be supporting councillor King's motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Brockington. Councillor Menard.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Just on councillor, following up on councillor Brockington's questions to staff, my understanding was that an EA process will occur. Regardless here, that that process you outlined will occur, uh whether it's designated or not. Is that not accurate?
Mr. Mayor, that is what we what we spoke about, yes. The the options are are different based on the heritage. There is a, there is specific guidance offered by the Ministry of Transportation on how to execute a bridge. Um environmental assessment when it has been designated. So the scope of the options are are modified by that guidance.
Okay, and if council were to say, yes, we believe this bridge should be designated uh today. Uh, could that EA come back and recommend, yes, continue with designation or that there's other options where perhaps the bridge would not be designated further? And other options might come forward just process wise? So Chair, uh through the EA process, as I mentioned earlier, there'll be three studies. The heritage impact assessment, the conservation uh report and the cultural heritage impact, um or sorry, cultural heritage evaluation report. Through the conservation report, there would be a range of options provided in terms of methods to conserve the whole bridge. The memory of the bridge, abutments, uh et cetera, um the whole range, whole costs. Uh and feasibility from a technical standpoint, really information that we don't have right now that we believe we need to have. Uh a staff to provide our best recommendations to council on not only the site, but the current the current structure. Thank you for that. That that's helpful. So I think you could come back and uh make changes um based on what we're discussing today. The I want to know, did the heritage analysis and evaluation report that was attached. Find that the former CPR bridge does meet the requirements of Ontario Regulation oh nine oh six for designation. Under part four of the Ontario Heritage Act, just a yes or no is is fine. Yes, uh Chair did. It met three of the nine tests, which uh which uh indicate that council may designate a property should they choose. Okay, thank you for that. I just, I want to just go through, if I can, Mayor, just some of the history of the bridge. I I recognize not all councillors will know about this bridge. It's not in your wards necessarily, not in your wards, may not connect your wards, but. The bridge was constructed in eighteen ninety-eight. Uh it's the last survivor of the four historic bridges that spanned the Rideau at this strategic location. It's located just south of the highway four seventeen and adjacent to the University of Ottawa's. Lee's campus. Uh it connects the Rideau River Eastern Pathway with the west end of the bridge connecting to the Nature Trail and the O train pedestrian path. The bridge was. Constructed to facilitate initially the Montreal and Ottawa short line and intercity passenger line, offering direct service to Montreal and Ottawa. And it connected to Canada's Atlantic tracks terminating at the JR Booth Grand Truck Depot, south of Rideau Street. Uh the first future site of the Ottawa Union Station. The bridge is one of the last remnants of rail infrastructure leading to the core of the city. And is a reminder of the wider historic landscape and industry, uh industrial infrastructure centered around uh the Rideau. Uh canal corridor. The bridge also contributes to an understanding of the transition of Ottawa's waterfronts from industrial to recreational spaces in the mid twentieth century. And following the Graber Plan, uh industrial and passenger rail was gradually relocated out of the core, culminating with the nineteen sixty-six closure of Ottawa Union Station. The bridge was uh removed from service and converted into pedestrian and cycling bridge. It has contextual value as the last remaining bridge in what was once a cluster of those four rail bridges at this location. Uh the old railway bridge that runs parallel to Queen's Way, it serves four wards directly, but many of those wards beyond that as a key uh connection. Uh CPR stopped using the bridge in nineteen sixty-six, as mentioned. The city has conducted work on the bridge. We've invested money in this bridge over time. Um in nineteen fifty-two, replacement of the timber deck and the wearing service in in nineteen ninety-nine. I'll just leave you with this, Mayor. Um the the committee obviously voted five to three on this. I think. Chateau Laurie decision, whichever way you stood on that, my position was that we should have followed the committee's advice at that time. I think the same is is here on this one. Local architect and heritage expert Barry Podolski regularly visits the bridge. And in an article for Sandy Hill Image noted, on my morning walks along the Rideau River, I discovered the fact that the bridge possesses an extraordinarily beautiful curve. I'd always assumed that it was straight, but when you look and squint along its access, the most subtle axis, uh most subtle curve is revealed, creating a visual liveliness. Um that the architects of the Pantheon well understood in four thirty-eight B.C. I think we've got heritage experts on on our heritage committee. Um, you know, the heritage evaluation report shows that this meets designation. It meets designation. Uh and so I think in this case, we can come back with that EA, which you've heard from staff. It's going to happen anyway. That EA is going to occur. This is a beautiful bridge. We haven't used it. I encourage you to use it. And I think it represents a lot of the city boss's history and. Um just encouraged to uh to support the original committee recommendations. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Menard. Councillor Carr.
Uh, thank you very much. Uh so just for context, the the bridge, both ends of the bridge are in councillor Menard's ward. But I am one of the four wards on the uh what would be the south side, uh which was in within meters of the bridge. I'm very aware that my community would like to see the heritage designation of this bridge being made. It's very important in the community. I just want to clarify a couple of points from hearing the discussion today. So from what I understand, the motion by by councillor King that's being put forward that would allow for. The um staff recommendation to go through and have the three reports produced. That would not exclude a heritage designation for the bridge in the future, correct?
Correct, Mayor. Our intention would be to come back to Build Heritage Committee in Q one twenty twenty-four through recommendation on designation with the benefit of those three reports and a concluded environmental assessment.
Okay, and the second question that I have then. If we were to go with the original motion today to allow for an immediate heritage designation. There has, has there been any public consultation on that heritage designation within the broader communities? Other than at the Built Heritage Committee?
Not to my knowledge. I am aware, Mayor, that some of the community associations have have corresponded on this matter with Member Podolski, but not any general. Public consultation. Public consultation would be undertaken as part of the environmental assessment.
And that public consultation would include broad public consultation with the communities on all elements. And including the heritage designation itself.
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Carr. Councillor Leaper.
Thank you very much. Um I just want to make sure I'm understanding the implications of heritage designation today with respect to what needs to be done uh with the bridge. There, can I just ask, first of all, is there any question of maintaining a pedestrian and cycling link? Uh to join those two important pathway systems um at this location or proximate to it?
Mayor, my understanding in speaking with my colleagues in active transportation is that it remains a strong desire line and through your active transportation plan and uh it is confirmed as as a needed. Um trans river uh asset. So there it's not a question that a bridge is required there for all modes.
So one of the um potential, one of the potential outcomes of the environmental assessment wouldn't be. Uh, remove the bridge, don't replace it. That's that's not a a question here, right?
No, no, Mayor. Uh as part of the uh report that'll be before you later this morning. Uh there's a recommendation to continue with a a trans Rideau crossing.
So the the issue is, should this bridge uh be maintained to the point where it can continue for the. Long term to carry pedestrian and cycling traffic, or are there alternatives? Um, if we designate the bridge today, and I just want to run through the major structural issues that are in place today. Um, there is medium to very severe corrosion of structural steel elements below deck, including the girder bottom flanges. I'm pretend to know what that means. Interior web of the uh girders and rivet heads. If we designate the bridge today, does that imply one level of rehabilitation uh versus another? Yeah, I'm trying to understand how expensive that would be.
Mr. Mayor, the the details of the of the structural assessment. Tell us about how this hundred and twenty-five year old bridge is doing. And it has not had. A major structural um overhaul during the time that the city's been responsible for it. Largely because it was designed as a railway bridge and it's currently carrying. Um cycling and active transportation. And so the loading, the technical requirements of that structure are different. And and the structure is visually at a different place that it would be if it were still carrying a train. The rehabilitation strategy that we would take for um a major overhaul, as just as was uh one of the options presented in the twenty eighteen assessment report. There's so far you can go. Right? There's only so far you can go. It it isn't imagined to remove those elements and replace them. There would be repairs that could be done. There can be coatings that's applied to the steel to make it better resistant to corrosion. There is uh similar protection layers that we would be able to put on the abutments. The place where the bridge connects to the concrete um foundations. Those, the bearings, those type of mechanical things, those can be revisited and replaced and repaired. The expected lifespan of the rehabilitation of the bridge is about twenty-five years. It's superficial um improvements. The core of the bridge will remain to be a hundred and twenty-five years old. If uh the twenty, the other option presented in the twenty eighteen um. Study is a full replacement of the bridge, which is all new elements. That option. If if I were to speculate on the on the EA, that option includes. Some benefits that a rehabilitation does not. For one, I'll say environmental. When when we rehabilitate the existing bridge, it's over an active river. There's going to be a bunch of protection measures that we have to install so that stuff doesn't fall into the river. A lot of hoarding and temporary structures which add cost. Versus if we were, uh if I were to imagine a new structure, it's going to be built in a factory. You're familiar, councillor, with the Harmar Bridge. Um, and it's very controlled situation. It's much less to risk to the physical um environment. But it's that full range of as we as we make our way down the list of the type of comments and the type of considerations that an EA includes. There are going to be factors such as the ones I've described. In both cases, in in favor and um in in exploring all the options. That's, I think, the benefit of the EA because there there are. A shorter list of things you can do to rehabilitate an existing hundred and twenty-five year old bridge. They have a shorter lifespan. That has a cost implication. Um, there's a, there's a use implication to a rehabilitation option because it'll be out of use. For a couple of years that while that work is executed. If I imagine the outcome of an EA that's a new bridge, we would leave the existing bridge in use and service would not be interrupted. As an example, the. These are just the the things that we are chatting about in terms of where this goes and and what are the things that we would look at. But there are different technical outcomes from a range of, as I've described, superficial to a brand new bridge that would be explored in EA.
If the bridge were to be uh replaced. Is there the potential for adaptive reuse of some of the current structural elements of the existing bridge?
That's that's the. I spoke earlier, uh Mr. Mayor, about the characteristics of this bridge. And with this bridge coming in with. The character and the heritage value that's reflected in the report, that's the work that's been done so far and the work that will incrementally be done in the three reports Mr. Curry referred to. That becomes part of the the EA process in discovering what is the best option when we look at everything. And there are absolutely. Uh historical elements. We we have um. The staff report to to committee in fact included photos of, for for instance, the Bank Street Bridge over the canal near Lansdowne Park. That bridge is not designated heritage, but it has a very heritage feel to it because of the the design process or. Um, it's. Absolutely, yes, uh Mr. Mayor. There there are many ways and and we're informed on those ways. By this MTO document about how to proceed with considering design options for a heritage designated bridge.
Okay. When I, when I look at the other um. Major structural deficiency of the of the current bridge, medium corrosion of the structural steel elements above deck. A failure of the steel coating system, severe to very severe delamination and disintegration of the concrete encasement of the abutments and piers. Um, I think it behooves us to understand better through the EA process. What some of the options might be if we were to proceed with replacement rather than um rehabbing the bridge as it is today. Uh, so I'm I'm pleased that councillor King brought this motion. Uh I'm not particularly disturbed. Our job as elected officials is to take recommendations from committees. And and debate those. Um and I think that's what we're doing today. So I'm I'm pleased councillor King brought this motion. I'm pleased to second it and I'll be supporting it. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Leaper. Councillor Curry.
Mr. Mayor, really councillor Leaper asked most of what I was going to ask, but I just want to summarize. So. If we designated it early on as heritage, it would restrict restrictive options. But if we don't designate it as heritage, we could designate as heritage later on. I think that. That is an important thing to note. People that like to make sure things are known to be, and the history was very appreciated, councillor Menard. It was. Very interesting to know all that history of it. Uh, people who want to make sure that that is known and preserved have many ways to do it, including designating as heritage later on. So I I think I will be supporting the uh motion by councillor King. Although I do would like, I would like to really think longer about our committee assignments if uh if. We have to question anything that comes from a committee. I think this is the place to do it, not just who voted for what or what the committee said. This is, it is our ability to change things. I just think this one, actually, what councillor King here is trying to do is give us more options rather than fewer. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Curry. Um, and uh for the for the reasons outlined by councillor Curry and by councillor King and others, I will be supporting councillor King's motion as well. Um, so uh let's have the vote, a recorded vote on councillor King's motion, please.
Councillor De Roche.
Wait.
Councillor Brown.
Yes.
Councillor Devine.
Yes.
Councillor Johnson.
Yes.
Councillor Dudas.
Yes.
Councillor Bradley.
Yes.
Councillor Gower.
Yes.
Councillor King.
Yes.
Councillor Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Councillor Menard.
Oh.
Councillor Lulov.
Yes.
Councillor Brockington.
Yes.
Councillor De Rose.
Yes.
Councillor Curry.
Yes.
Councillor Lowe.
Yes.
Councillor Kits.
Yes.
Councillor Tierney.
Yes.
Councillor Carr.
Yes.
Councillor Leaper.
Yes.
Councillor Kelly.
No.
Conseil plant.
No.
Councillor Truster.
Yes.
Councillor Hill.
Yes.
Councillor Hubley.
Yes.
Mayor Setcliffe.
Yes.
Twenty-two yeas, three nays.
Okay, thank you. Um. Is, so then let's vote now on the um. Uh committee recommendations as amended. Is there, are there any comments on that before we uh proceed to a vote on the amended committee recommendations? Okay, is that carried? All right.
Sound.
Dissent from councillor Kelly. Okay, let's move to items seventeen, uh the transportation committee's report. And um there are a number of motions uh. Uh that have been advanced. Uh so let's begin. Uh that have been advanced. Uh so let's begin uh with a motion from councillor Lowe. Councillor Lowe.
Uh thank you, Chair. Uh whereas a transportation master plan, TMP, is the document that guides. The city of Ottawa's future decisions for its transportation network, including road transit and active transportation infrastructure. Whereas the TMP was originally to be presented as one document to the previous council, but due to delays from the pandemic, the decision was made to split the document into two, TMP parts one and two. And whereas uh part one is a doc policy document, which includes road design principles, active transportation considerations and mode prioritization prioritization. And whereas TMP part two has the bulk of our investments into the transportation network up to twenty forty six, including new and improved roads and bridges, trans priority measures and other related infrastructure that has yet to be presented. And whereas the origin destination survey, which is used to guide the capital investments of the TMP, was delayed by the pandemic. And whereas the origin destination survey is jointly conducted by the cities of Ottawa and Gatineau, the departments and agencies, the governments of provinces, Ontario and Quebec, and the National Capital Commission. And whereas the origin destination survey is complete and staff are in the process of analyzing the data. And whereas TMP part one is a policy document that does not provide counsel with a complete understanding of how these those policies will affect uh investments. Whereas TMP part two, which features the bulk of our investments into the transportation network up to twenty forty six, is needed to address deficiencies in our transportation network. Whereas without the origin destination survey data and details from TMP, uh sorry, and details from TMP part two, the policies of TMP part one may negatively affect council's ability to deliver on investments for the transportation network. Especially in growing communities across the city like Barhaven and Orleans, among others. And whereas decisions on policy and investments for the city of Ottawa's transportation network, arguably our most important infrastructure, must be made with a full and complete understanding of the impacts of policy on investments. And the impacts of investments on policy. Uh therefore be a result that the transportation master plan, TMP part one, be referred back to transportation committee to be considered in full with TMP part two when part two is ready. I I want to disclose that I I did vote in favor at committee at first of TMP part one, because I thought we were going to be able to kind of work within the policy to determine what our investments are are going to be. But. Uh the more stewed over it, the more uh uncomfortable I got with, you know, um our decision coming back to haunt us in two years. I do want to acknowledge uh the the work that staff did put in. These were some extenuating circumstances that had led to this situation. And um and I do recognize how outdated their current TMP is. And. And and some of the points I circulated in email last night. So uh that's uh I hope I can earn your support for this. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, councillor Lowe. And just to be clear, this is a procedural motion, so we'll consider it before the other motions that uh. That we would look at uh depending on the outcome of this motion. Um so I just want to start by asking staff, if you would, um to. Provide some clarity on what would what would happen if this motion would would were to be adopted. What would be the implications of that? Uh how would it affect staff work going forward? On the other part of the transportation master plan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um yes, staff staff do have concerns about um how this could affect the timing of the delivery of the transportation master plan. And perhaps some other unintended consequences on active transportation projects that uh allow transportation planning staff to comment on. You know, as as we work on the uh part two of the plan, there will be uh multiple opportunities, consult with community and councillors on on priorities. And if there are um issues with a policy that are identified. There's certainly opportunities to correct them when we bring uh part two of the transportation master plan back to uh to council. So uh perhaps I'll turn it over to um. Uh Zlak, oh, he can speak to uh some of the impacts on active transportation, uh should the motion carry.
Mr. Mayor, in terms of the active transportation plan. We are as staff working on the twenty thirteen project list, which is uh. The projects within that list that we're working on now are definitely not as um. Um as critical as the ones we've identified in the new list. We did, in fact, review all the old projects to see which ones should be carried for forward if they met the new criteria. So uh there's no question that the new list of projects would be far more beneficial to work on even over the next two years. In addition, in terms of the question of the extent to which the OD survey results inform the active transportation plan. There tends not to be as strong a coupling as there would be for roads or rail since the OD survey is not so fine grained as to understand who needs to go to a school by a sidewalk. And in addition, should major projects like transit ways or rail come out of the next stage. They would have incorporated within the active transportation components that are appropriate to whatever route is selected.
Okay, thank you. So just to be clear then, um that just to pick up on a point that you made you made uh Mr. Herwire that. E- even if the even if part one were approved today, there would still be room to uh to to amend it and to to add or subtract things from it. Before the final uh approval of the total transportation master plan. Is that correct?
Uh yes, Mr. Mayor, uh perhaps. A recent uh similar process that I can draw on when we were doing the official plan, um. We came in a series of reports, established uh, you know, criteria to evaluate urban expansion lands as an example. And at the time when it came back to council, um. The staff recommendation was based on that previous uh criteria, but council still. As everyone recalls, made some changes and that that ability still exists when we come back with part two.
Okay, thank you. Uh all right, let's uh move to uh councillors' questions and comments on uh the this procedural motion. Councillor Menard.
Thank you uh very much, Mayor. Um you asked a question I was going to ask first up, so I appreciate the the answers from staff on that. I guess I have one question and probably a follow a comment. I understand that that this part of the document is city policies relating to building the transportation network that. Don't rely explicitly on the origin destination study. Um it sets up how road building would be prioritized, which is where the origin destination study. Would come in. So I just want to. Get clarity from staff if that's if that's relatively accurate.
I'd ask Jennifer to respond to that.
Uh yes, Mr. Mayor, that's correct.
Okay, thank you for that. Um the origin destination study obviously has been done before our stage two LRT is operational. Um I've asked this before of staff, but just get clarity at council. How will the origin destination study be updated to take into account the new travel uh patterns of residents of Ottawa with stage two operational?
Uh so, Mr. Mayor, uh as part of the modeling work that we will do in the next part of the transportation master plan. That work will consider the impacts of all um planned transportation projects, including stage uh. Any any of the elements of stage two. Uh so that will be explicitly accounted for as part of developing future travel uh forecast, both road uh demand and transit demand.
Okay. Thank you for that. I make that point just because I think obviously that will determine a lot of what we end up doing and to see the patterns that people do travel. Once that once that's operational, it will be important. I um I thought I thought about this this motion. I I don't support it. Um I think staff have done a good job um of getting us to this point. The fact that we can make changes as TMP staged, the second part of it comes forward, I think, is important information. Our staff have worked hard to get us to this point. And I know committees worked hard on this as well. There's a lot of very good projects in there. I can understand, um you know, from some of my colleagues, some changes that might be made in in their wards as I see councillor Kits is is raising and. Uh councillor Lowe and others may have changes in in their wards. Um but for the most part, what's been presented for the majority of our wards, I think a lot of councillors are supportive of that network. And we don't want to lose all of that or see that derailed uh at this stage, um when we know we can make some changes in the future if needed. Uh so I just want to thank staff for all their work on this to this point. I'm supportive of um the stage one to TMP. And want to see that move forward and get this work undergoing uh on keep this work ongoing because it's been a long process to this point. Obviously, the pandemic has derailed us too. Uh in this process, we already had a large delay with this. Um so just uh supporting staff's work and uh appreciate everything that's come forward to this point. Mayor, I'll vote against the the low motion and uh happy to see us move forward on the TMP overall. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Menard. Councillor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh I just wanted to ask staff to bring forward, what exactly was the testing mechanism for the scoring frameworks that are part of TMP part one?
So just to be clear, is this about the deferral motion though, or is this? Yeah.
See drill, I'll I'll just skip to my things. All right, so. I appreciate the intention of councillor Lowe's motion in the sense that the TMP in phases might give us pause. But I I believe the suggestion to defer the approval of the document has many unintended consequences. So. I just want to understand, you know, if we were to refer this, um would we be able to, we would essentially have all the policies of twenty thirteen TMP in place until uh phase. Phase two in twenty twenty five? Is that the implication?
Yes, uh Mr. Mayor, that is correct.
Okay, so um so I think I think for these reasons, I I won't be supportive of the motion. I I I agree with councillor Menard. There are many policies in the phase one uh that have actions that are low cost or even even free in the way that we can approach our transportation network. Some of them that I'm the most excited about. Are relating to uh pilot projects. We've been asking the city of Ottawa to do less studies, fewer studies and to pilot. Uh an experiment. And here we have policies in this document that would allow for, as councillor Divine asked at committee. Us as councillors to bring forward ideas to advance our our transportation goals uh in lighter, quicker and cheaper ways. Uh which is also really essential right now when we have such restricted budgets. Um I think that when it comes to, you know, the active transportation network uh pieces that are described in this in this uh in this plan. Um they were they were heavily consulted. Uh they were very publicly available and uh they are very strongly supported. And so if we were to defer this. Uh we would be undermining the work that residents did to uh put their put their opinions forward into the TMP. I I think that generally we we want the um uh the PDF overlay of the whole network and we'll be getting that. So we have some uh some availability there. Um and finally, you know, with respect to the the twenty twenty three TMP phase two, we're going to end up having three costed scenarios instead of just one. Determined. End result for investment. Uh and the current TMP twenty thirteen just had one funding scenario. It was, this is what you got. So if you're not happy with that, the TMP twenty twenty three phase two actually gives council more oversight. More discretion, more opportunities for debate. Uh so for those reasons, I think we should be supporting uh moving forward. With phase one so that staff isn't left rudderless uh as they try and create phase two. So I I won't be supporting this motion, Mr. Mayor. Um and I'll look forward to hearing more from my colleagues.
Thank you, councillor Johnson. Councillor Curry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just procedurally, I don't think there's any intent by councillor Lowe to undermine anybody or anything. I think procedurally, there's a comment or a concern that. Uh if you wanted to change something at a later date in this, would it actually be reconsideration? Or is it more likely that. The details of something that would come forward would be a part of some other motion that would just be uh able to be tweaked. When you think about the example that manager uh Herwire gave us. It wasn't necessarily against anything that was in any overall plan when the switch was done of what area to use as the urban boundary extension. You know, that was a detail that wouldn't have been in a larger document. But if somebody wanted to change something that is in what we have in front of us here, like actually change something. That would be reconsideration. All the things that we're talking about could be done later on would be part of other motions. Am I right procedurally?
Uh I believe you are. I stand to be corrected by uh city clerk's office, but typically they would be dealt with through motions. And and again, as I mentioned, if if there was an issue that um. That was identified, um that, you know, staff acknowledged, we would bring forward the amendment as well.
Thank you for that. Like I see what what's coming up is councillor Kits has a bunch of motions, which, you know, she's putting those forward now. So we we will deal with those now. Right? And so that now's the time to make a specific change to it. But I what I think councillor Lowe is concerned about is some of the other details around uh all of what we're about to approve. That could be changed without a full reconsideration. It would just be specifics. So and I think that may be what uh would be the root. Uh to not refer this, but look more into the details when we have things come forward. But otherwise, you make a specific change right now so that you don't have to deal with reconsideration. And I don't think you have anything specific. I think it's more of a a larger uh perspective. Anyway, so I won't be supporting this referral. Uh but I would just note that that anything changed here would have to be a reconsideration, I believe.
Thank you, councillor Curry. Councillor Tierney.
Great. Uh thank you very much, uh Mr. Mayor. Uh first of all, um I'm one of uh two elected officials. Uh that actually has gone through the TMP process, myself and councillor Hubley. It's a very exciting time, a lot of great debate, and even speaking with other people. Uh I made mention of the fact, oh, forgive me, councillor De Roche is here. Sorry, welcome back. So there's three of us. I'm doing math today on the fly. Uh that being said, this is a living document, and I think that has been made very clear here today. Um I I'm deadly afraid of a scenario where there could be slippage. Because this first document is not the rubber hits the road. It's part two in twenty twenty five. And guess what? If we have slippage in twenty twenty five to twenty twenty six, that's everyone's election year and we hit pause once again. This is a tremendously important document, and I will not be supporting councillor Lowe's deferral of this specific motion. And I ask my colleagues to support me today in moving forward with this process. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Tierney. Councillor Devine.
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I I will not be uh supporting councillor Lowe's uh referral motion. However, that doesn't mean I don't appreciate the motion. I I also appreciate the fact that councillor Lowe uh made many rounds of phone calls last night and I had a good conversation with him. And I certainly appreciate. Uh what I believe to be the intent behind the motion, which is to put a pause uh to ensure that we we have it right. Um but I think uh I I I think that we we do have it right. I appreciate his efforts to gain. Greater clarity around practical implications of the proposed policies. I would suggest, however, it's important that we develop and consider the broader policy framework uh with a larger field of view. The city needs to work as a whole and we need policies that reflect that effort. We need. And I think what we have um are aspirational policies that that dream big. And leave room for a variety of possibilities. The process we have before us now, regardless of how it has changed from the process that was uh originally set, is that we have the opportunity to set. Policy first and implementation of that policy second from, as councillor Johnson reminded us, from a a list of scenarios. As I understand councillor Lowe's motion, the change that's proposed here in that motion might put us in a situation. Where setting policy could be tied to concerns of nature other than aspiration, for example, affordability. Um and I'm reluctant to put us into that kind of route where slippage uh could happen. Um I'm reluctant to go that route because I think by doing so, we would limit the broader policy horizon. By focusing perhaps too closely on on individual projects or or financial frameworks. And for that reason. Then um I'm I'm happy that we have the opportunity we have now. So I won't be supporting the motion, although I appreciate the intent behind it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Devine. Councillor Carr.
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh I wanted to thank staff. I was uh feeling yesterday that uh I myself wanted to initiate um. A a deferral of this and and uh. Staff took the time last night to meet with me for over an hour to go through things in detail, uh of which I had concerns. And um one of the things that came up, uh I asked a lot of questions about funding envelopes, how prioritization of the projects within. The list would work. I found my list overly ambitious, considering the track record previously of active transportation projects being being implemented in my ward. And one of the things that that came up, and I just want to confirm with staff, is that if this list were to be delayed for eighteen eighteen months or so until uh TMP part two was out. That there we we would lose the opportunity to prioritize those active transportation projects within the list presently. Is that correct? Is that, did I understand that well?
Mr. Mayor, staff would be left with only the twenty thirteen projects. That were approved to proceed on unless there was some other uh council-based process.
Yeah, so that that's what was really important to me is a lot of the two thousand thirteen projects that were within my ward were tiny little. Connections that didn't actually connect to the bigger picture. Um so I really felt after that meeting that I would I would lose the opportunity to have some really. Big impact projects where we to proceed with deferral. So I I certainly won't be um. Proceeding, supporting uh councillor Lowe's motion uh today, although I I I did feel um differently otherwise and and uh, you know, part of me. And, and, you know, part of me, when I was mulling it over last night, I, I sort of came to the realization that, in a term recently coined by one of my colleagues, that perhaps deferral would be intellectually lazy. So I really appreciate councillor Lowe's motion, but I won't be supporting it today. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Carr, councillor Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mayor. I will not be supporting this motion. As has already been said, Vivi Chi has said during the meeting, when we had an opportunity to have a full discussion on this at the Transportation Committee, that this is a living document, and we really need to move forward. I appreciate all the work that's been done. These are about policies. This is about a rethink of what we've been doing. We've moved forward since 2013, and I think we're going in the right direction for active transportation. So it doesn't mean things can't be added, and I appreciate that we all have things that we're going to see coming as we move forward. But we have to start somewhere, and I do not want to see this delayed at all, and I appreciate it. We put a lot of work into it, including an equity lens. And I want to take this opportunity to thank Sladco for all the work he's done, because he's put a ton of work into it, and the rest of the team. So I'd like to continue to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Kavanaugh, councillor Brockington.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to follow up on a response that I believe Mr. Herwire provided, that I am seeking clarification on. And I think I heard him say that there is still time to amend the list of active transportation projects in time when the Part Two list comes up. And I just wanted to understand that comment in particular, because my concerns to date that I articulated with staff throughout the last week, including a meeting last night, was that despite the River Ward specific list having some good projects in there, there's a lot that's not there. And I want to have a better understanding of what, what will a room exist after today to ensure that through future discussions with staff, projects that can be added, have that opportunity, and whether there is a window between now and when Part Two comes before committee and council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the question. Yeah, I think my comments were more around the, the policies in the TMP One. As we've heard and has been stated, it is a living, breathing document. There will be opportunities for periodic reviews. I'd ask Sladco to speak specifically to the, the active transportation list and, and the means by which they can be amended in the future.
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to mention that one of the important next steps within that active transportation list will be a prioritization of the projects we start working on within the next seven years. And that step will be taken in consultation with the councillors, and they are certainly welcome to get input from their residents. So from a practical point of view, I do believe there are enough excellent projects within the long list provided to make sure that the first seven years will deliver projects that are deemed to be very valuable for each ward. To the other point about changes, in the 2013 Act of Transportation plans, we did have a number of motions that went forward to modify or adjust various projects. So I think that's still always open. And my final comment would be that although this plan does run out to 2046, it is fully expected that within 10 years, we'd be revisiting it and could once again think about from the benefit of a few years in the future of what exactly changes should be made to the active transportation project list.
Just on that note, and then I'll park the rest of my questions for the, the open debate is, can you just explain what will happen at the five-year increments going forward? How much of a review or reflection on the lists will be undertaken? It's not going to be a complete TMP review, but what can I expect to be engaged on at those five-year, whatever we want to call it, those time limits or the, yeah, check-in?
Mr. Mayor, the period that I was mentioning, which was seven years, relates to the fact that the prioritization process for approximately five years, and then we have another two years where we, we as staff will be indicating within the annual budget documents which projects we start on in terms of the active transportation list. So that is a part of the deliverables that the whole TMP provides, which is some idea of what we start on first within active transportation. So going beyond that, there isn't the formal five-year, let's say, review horizon. But with, you know, if we look seven years from now, that timeframe would start to be when we think about updates to the overall plan. I'll allow my colleague Jennifer to speak to that.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So every five to 10 years, sort of in alignment with the official plan update, the transportation master plan would be reviewed. And as part of that process, there would be a review of the active transportation projects to confirm what's currently on the list. And some projects might fall off if there was changes in the, just how the city has developed and the priorities, and new projects could be added in at that point. So that would be sort of a similar process that we would do for the road and transit projects as well as part of that update. And there would be lots of consultation as part of that process as well.
Okay, I have a lot more to say, but I'll park it for the open debate at that point.
Sure. Thank you, councillor Brockington. I, councillor Lowe, you had your hand up, but it's not up anymore. You'll go at the end, okay. Councillor Hubley.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I have two questions that hinge on whether I support deferral or not. One is a clear explanation about existing projects that we've collected the DCs for, that I think councillor Carr referred to some things there, pieces of projects that were not completed, that were left hanging but are on the, or were on past TMPs. Do we get an assurance that all those items are being carried forward or will be publicly reviewed again? What's the plan?
Mr. Mayor, speaking to the elements of the 2013 Active Transportation Plan, staff is right now looking to finish the projects that were in flow. And up to a point where projects were either going to be handed off to our design and construction team out of planning and to be implemented, or they have already been grandfathered, if you will, and promoted into the new plan if planning wouldn't have been started within our expected window to flip to the new plan. Otherwise, the remaining plans that were in 2013 would not go forward. So there are still a number of projects that staff is working on and will intend to finish in the 2013 plan.
So if I heard you correctly, anything in 2013 not completed will not go forward? Is that what you just said at the end?
Mr. Mayor, in terms of completion, not in terms of, in terms of us handing it over from a planning to construction, but that still could be ultimately completed in terms of a facility that you use, perhaps a year or a year and a half from now, because we still intend to finish these planning projects, and that might take us to the end of the year or potentially a little bit longer. But if they're in flow right now, we would intend to hand them over. And so it's not that if they're not completed right now, that they will not be.
Okay, that, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not finding a very clear answer. If you're telling me a project from 2013, and I'll give you a specific example to try to help bring some clarity to this. In 2013, what was in the TMP was to finish the widening of Eagleson Road. There's a small section at the end that remains two lanes where the rest of it is four or more. The, I've worked with staff in the past where they've told me wait for this time on the TMP, because I'd like to give up those two extra lanes and have sidewalks built on that road instead. But how am I going to do that? If you say if it's in 2013 and it's not completed, then it gets dropped off. Are we starting from square one? Because we've already collected all the DCs to do that work on that road. So why does that project get canceled and all the DCs be given to something else?
So I can, Mr. Mayor, perhaps clarify on that response, that the, the next part of the transportation master plan will be reviewing the projects, the road and transit projects from the previous TMP as a starting point for the analysis. And then if those projects continue to be needed, based on the technical analysis, they would be carried forward. And if there were any projects that didn't make sense anymore, those would be dropped from the list. And in terms of the development charges, the list of projects would be updated that goes into the Development Charges Act. And the intent is that there would be a amendment to the Development Charges Act once the capital infrastructure plan of the TMP is improved in 2025.
Okay. On the TMP, that particular project was, is listed as a road widening. I want to convert that to sidewalk, which are part of the active transportation plan, which is what we're talking about dealing with today. And I'm asking for a clear indication that that is going to be possible and that we can use the DCs that were collected for that road to do that. Can I get a yes or a no to that?
So is this related to the referral motion though, councillor?
Yes, I would, I'm going to support deferral. If I cannot fix, there's this issue and one other that I want to bring up. If I can't get those fixed as part of this process or assurances that it will be, if not picked up in the first part of the TMP, but in the second, if they'll allow a conversion of a road to a sidewalk in the second, then great. But if I hear, as I've heard now from staff, that they just are going to cancel those projects and move those DCs to something else, well, then I think the residents, a portion of their house went into paying for those services, are going to be quite upset. So I'd like a very clear answer that I can then relay to the public to say, yes, we will be talking about sidewalks on Eagleson during the next process of the TMP. And all I want is a yes or a no to that. And, and that will, that, and as I said, my next question, which I'll ask in a second, will determine how I vote on deferral.
So, Mr. Mayor, yes, that type of consideration would be part of the next phase in the TMP.
Perfect, thank you. And so my second question is, in Kanata and Bell's Corners and parts of Stittsville, we've got a very well-developed pathway system that residents have used for years. Instead of sidewalks on the street, they take pathways behind their houses, which is safer for children to use to get to school. We winter maintain them, they have streetlights on them. It's a viable sidewalk network, yet after amalgamation, the city of Ottawa's TMP never recognized that as a sidewalk network. And it's been impossible to get funding to do repairs to these pathways that are now deteriorating. So I need to get an indication from staff. It's part of the active transportation network, so why is it not in this piece of the TMP?
Mr. Mayor, if the issue is maintenance of those existing facilities, I believe that our asset management group does keep track of and is managing and doing life cycle of all pathways as well. And we do have some pathways that do represent pedestrian facilities because they are the only or best means for pedestrian, pedestrian travel. That being said, in terms of the new plan, we, we still deploy and are considering multi-use pathways and have those within the plan where, where we feel they are warranted.
Where they are warranted, okay. So we're talking about the older pathways, possibly that I think we may have to upgrade to the MOP standard because the public workspeople have switched their sidewalk clouds over to the wider cloud. And what I can give you numerous pictures of from this winter is that much larger sidewalk cloud just ripping up the grass along the pathways because the blade is down longer than the path. So I, I just.
Hubley, I just want to get back to the point we're debating right now, which is the referral motion. If we could, please.
Sure. As I said, Mr. Mayor, this is tied to deferral. I'm just looking for assurances, say, because it's missing from this piece of the TMP. So I would support deferral if that's what staff told me I need to do to get this addressed in the TMP. So an answer to that would be great. Are we able to deal with this, or do I need to support deferral?
From the staff response, I don't believe it's a TMP issue. It's a, it's an asset management and maintenance issue, so it's unrelated.
Okay, that works for me, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hubley, councillor Lulov. And again, I'll just remind everyone, we're debating the referral motion. There will be lots of time to debate the Transportation Master Plan Part One and the related motions themselves.
Okay, here are the reasons why I decided to, to second this motion from councillor Lowe. We're hearing that there's room for wiggle room in the list. First, I want to express my appreciation for staff for putting this together. I think that, you know, Sladco and the team did a really wonderful job. Perhaps, perhaps we shouldn't have put together a priority list that was incomplete. You know, we don't see the Brian Coburn Extension, the St. Joseph Secondary Plan project of having a complete street. That's cycling and walkable infrastructure. Doesn't send a very good message to my community when we don't put that on a list, when we've just passed that in the last term and are very excited about it. I'm supporting referral because there's, there's no connections to the villages, Navin, Cumberland. So if you want to take a bike, you know, from the, from the village to come in and get on the LRT, you can't. There's almost no pedestrian infrastructure whatsoever in the East End on the map that was provided. You know, no pedestrian crossover of the 174, you have to cross at grade. That's why I'm supporting referral, just making sure I'm bringing it back to referral for you, Mr. Mayor. No enhanced connection to Petrie Island as well, so no way for people to walk to one of the most beautiful gems in the East End. Right now, it's a dirt road. To get down the largest beach in the city of Ottawa, you have to walk down a dirt road. That's, you know, half a kilometer long. You know, so we're talking about wiggle room, there's, there's room, there's, there's wiggle room in this, right? I'm talking about things that would register on the Richter scale, you know, compared to, you know, what, what we saw on the list. This is not just wiggle room. So the reason why I'm going to support, you know, deferral of this is that, you know, let's get this to a place where my residents feel like they're not simply beneficiaries of wiggle room. You know, let's show them that we, that we, that we did the work, that we've identified that we've been consistent in our priorities, that we're thinking about active transportation in some of the least walkable neighborhoods and the least cyclable neighborhoods in this city. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Lulov, councillor Lowe.
Thank you. If, yeah, so I do appreciate the conversation that we're having here today, and I want to reiterate that I do appreciate the work that staff and Chair Tierney did put into this TMP. I'm not trying to undermine anybody. These were just, these were just some of the concerns I had, and I don't want us to be bound, I guess, by, by Part One. I, no, I understand this is a living document, and some of the assurances that I was looking for, some of them haven't answered. If you don't mind, you gave me some clarification. At what point do specific changes that we ask for kind of encroach into the territory for reconsideration? I feel like that'd be a correct question, or?
I don't know if city clerk's office wants to weigh in that, but I think my previous response indicated that, you know, much like the official plan was a living and breathing document, and amendments came forward, those can happen in the process ahead. So procedurally, I'll defer further comment.
Mr. Mayor, we have nothing to add with regards to that. I think this is clear with the G M said that there will be opportunities to add things in the future. So technically, it's not a reconsideration under the procedure by law. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. No, I know, just I guess to wrap up, do apologize for the timing in which I sent this last night. It was ten P M last night. So that I'll eat that up. But no, I I think I know where council stands on this, but let's move it forward.
Thank you, Councilor Low. Let's move to recorded vote then on the motion to refer back to committee, please.
Counselor Deroche.
Wait.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Devine.
No.
Counselor Johnson.
No.
Counselor Dudas.
No.
Counselor Bradley.
No.
Counselor Gower.
No.
Counselor King.
No.
Counselor Kavanaugh.
No.
Counselor Menard.
No.
Counselor Lulov.
Yes.
Counselor Brockington.
No.
Counselor Druze.
No.
Counselor Curry.
No.
Counselor Low.
Yes.
Counselor Kits.
No.
Counselor Tierney.
No.
Counselor Carr.
Hell.
Counselor Leeper.
No.
Counselor Kelly.
Yes.
Conseil plant.
We.
Counselor Troster.
No.
Counselor Hill.
No.
Counselor Hubley.
Uh, no.
Mayor Suckoff.
No.
Six years, nineteen days.
Thank you. So let's move now to the Transportation Master Plan recommendation itself. And there are, as I understand that there are five other motions to the original recommendation from the committee. So I'm going to ask for those motions to be to be read in and then we'll have discussion and and comments on and questions about those those motions. So we'll just read those motions beginning with Counselor Menard's motion, please.
Thank you very much, Mayor. And this has been updated in a friendly way with Counselor Brown. I appreciate that work together. I'm just gonna to simplify it, read to whereas clauses and therefore be it resolves. Whereas the development of the T M P Capital Infrastructure Plan will involve a multi-step process at which application of the proposed roads project scoring rubrics, new roads and road widens is only one part. And whereas the National Capital Commission in its capacity as federal planning approval authority, an agency responsible for the capital's interprovincial mobility planning, have expressed both their desire to ensure environmental concerns are captured in the development of the T M P Capital Infrastructure Plan and their pleasure to work with the city to improve sustainable transportation in the national capital region. Therefore, be it resolved that staff include due consideration of induced demand and G H G emissions in the development and evaluation of the transit and road networks in the next phase of the T M P. And be a further resolve that staff consider for consideration for induced demand extend only to areas A, B, and C under zoning schedule one of the city of Ottawa zoning bylaw where alternatives to private vehicles are more widely available. To mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Menard. Next motion, Conseil plant, s'il vous plaît.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just read the be it resolved that and I just want to thank staff for their help and not only at committee last week and their clarifying comments on the situation on King Edward, but in their support for this. So be it resolved that the wording of the proposed T M C policy document be amended to add the following. As part of any future interprovincial crossing studies, the city will work with the N C C to ensure that the analysis of crossing demands considers the different options for routing trucks through downtown, including analysis of the impacts on surrounding communities and a plan for how interprovincial trucks will be routed through Highway four seventeen and the Quebec highways five and fifty. This information will be shared with council prior to the finalization of a decision on a suitable, safe and efficient alternative. Merci.
Merci Conseil plant. Counselor Kits has three motions. Go ahead with those, please.
Apologies. And just first one, I think, is on, yeah, perfect. So whereas the city of Ottawa is committed to promoting active transportation, including cycling as a sustainable and healthy mode of transportation, whereas the Transportation Master Plan Part One includes a proposed crosstown bikeway network to enhance cycling infrastructure across the city and improve connectivity for cyclists. Whereas the Navin Road section from Brian Coburn Boulevard to the Blackburn Hamlet bypass is a key transportation corridor that connects the communities of Bradley Estates, Trails Edge, and Chapel Hill South and has high demand for active transportation options due to its proximity to the Chapel Hill South Park and Ride. Whereas City Council carried a motion on April fourteenth, twenty twenty one for Navin Road urbanization review of priority in the Transportation Master Plan update, which included provisions for cycle tracks and sidewalks in support of the city's act of transportation and complete streets policies. Therefore, be it resolved that the section of Navin Road from Brian Coburn Boulevard to the Blackburn Hamlet bypass be added to the proposed crosstown bikeway network as outlined in Document Five of the Transportation Master Plan Part One. You just want us to read them, right? No. Next, and we've got, whereas the city of Ottawa is experiencing significant growth and rapid new development in suburban rural transacts with a substantial increase in new housing starts and subdivision projects planned. Whereas many residents of suburban rural transacts are concerned about an absence of transportation infrastructure and mobility options to meet their daily and weekly travel needs. Whereas the T M P Capital Infrastructure Plan is focused on identifying, analyzing, and addressing mobility needs, including quantifying travel demand relative to transportation infrastructure capacity. Whereas the transit and road project prioritization frameworks aim to prioritize projects that meet the city's mobility needs and address travel demand, including scoring projects and identifying implementation phases for each project. Therefore, be it resolved, the document for be revised to clarify that projects may be considered for an earlier phase of implementation in areas of the city where unmet travel demand is highest as quantified through the technical analysis, where there is an existing lack of mobility options and where other transportation infrastructure projects are unlikely to be constructed in the near term. And be it further resolved that the Transportation Master Plan Part Two develop maps and or metrics to illustrate differences in mobility options and performance across different areas of the city to inform implementation phasing as described above. Lastly, whereas the city of Ottawa is experiencing significant growth and rapid new development in suburban rural transacts with a substantial increase in new housing starts and subdivision projects planned. Whereas it is crucial to prioritize and invest in major transportation infrastructure projects to support growth and intensification, including developing these areas into fifteen-minute communities and promoting healthy connected streets as outlined in the new official plan. Whereas Policy five seven of the Transportation Master Plan expects an increase in the percentage of funding allocated to sustainable transportation projects in the T M P Capital Infrastructure Plan compared to previous plans. And the same shift is expected to apply to the collection of development charge funding for transportation infrastructure to support growth and intensification. Whereas Policy eight one and nine four of the T M P Part One emphasizes the need to establish mechanisms for reviewing and reprioritizing projects as land use and transportation patterns evolve and to review the use and structure of front-ending agreements to support the delivery of transportation infrastructure where appropriate. Therefore, be it resolved that through the development of the Long Rage Financial Plan, staff investigate opportunities to sufficiently and affordably fund major transportation infrastructure projects in areas experiencing significant rapid growth. And be it further resolved that the next D C background study and D C bylaw update reflect the projects and programs that support the T M P policies to ensure that there is sufficient affordable funding for major transportation infrastructure projects in areas experiencing significant rapid growth.
Thank you, Counselor Kits. So I want to provide an opportunity for the movers to speak to their motions if they if they choose to and then also open it up for questions and discussion on all the motions and the committee recommendation itself. So just put up your hand if you want to speak, Counselor Hubley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a question to Counselor Menard's motion. Could we put a map up showing area B, A, B, and C so that the public will know what that motion is talking about?
Do we have a map showing areas A, B, and C?
We could get Counselor Menard's motion back on the screen, please.
So there's there's a reference to areas A, B, and C, but do you want to do you want to speak to where areas A, B, and C are?
Sure. Yeah. So I mean, Counselor Brown has talked to me about the rural area and obviously I see the difference there. And so it's it's important that we've updated it with that friendly amendment. That's what it's speaking to area D within the rural area. Thank you.
So A, B, and C is just the exclusion of any rural property within the boundaries of the city? Is that would that be a better way to say it for the public know what we're talking about here?
That's correct, Counselor.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hubley. Counselor Gower.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Could could I ask that staff give us a quick evaluation or any commentary they have on each of the each of the five motions? Think it might help focus our debate as we go here.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Staff worked extensively over the last number of days with the various counselors to help shape the motions to a form that staff can support. So staff are supportive.
Staff are supportive of each of the five motions. Okay. I may have just wasted my opportunity to speak, but I'll leave it there.
Okay, Counselor Bradley.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I just have a clarification question on one of Counselor Kits' motion. So this is the considering mobility deficits in the prioritization of transit and road projects. So in the first, therefore be it resolves, it talks about clarifying that projects may be considered for an earlier phase of implementation areas in the city where unmet travel demand is the highest. So I'm just trying to understand, does if this changes anything? Does the scoring criteria that we put in place through through this part one of T M P, does it not already prioritize areas where mobility needs might be the highest in the city? Does this change anything or is it just clarification?
Mr. Mayor, so I can clarify on that point. So the prioritization framework will rank the projects with a numerical score. And then the next step of the process will be to group the projects into implementation timeframe. So a short, medium, and long-term timeframe. And as part of that process, staff will also be looking at opportunities to bundle projects, feasibility constraints that may impact the timing. And so this just clarifies that those are the sorts of considerations that we would be looking at as we're grouping the projects into phasing.
So so does this change anything? Does it give greater priority to to these types of areas that Counselor Kits is identifying or is it is it? Like, I'm just trying to understand what it changes.
It provides more clarity to the wording that was in the attached document to the staff report, but the intent is similar.
So is it necessary or is it redundant then?
As I said, it provides that additional clarity to staff to to give emphasis to the areas with greatest demand and where there's feasibility constraints and that language wasn't there in the in the original wording. So that that adds that detail.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Bradley. Counselor Hill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a question for staff, I think, with regard to the Menard motion. And I just, I want to confirm from staff, you know, technically speaking, how is this process going to happen? This is this is a, I heard from Mr. Herwar that this is achievable. But I just want to make sure, like, is this significant staff resources that are going to go into looking at something or is this something that was already kind of considered in terms of, you know, you know, looking at building a framework? And then my second question, I think, for the mover is specific to the data point we're trying to get from this in terms of what is the data we're trying to gain from from looking at this this potential resolution so that we can make decisions going forward. I just a bit of clarity in terms of that data point. So I guess my first question would be for staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll start and perhaps Jennifer would like to build on. So in terms of the motion, it really is consistent with, you know, previous council direction in terms of the climate change master plan and and bringing a climate lens on to all of our future master plans. So it's it's certainly consistent with, you know, previous approvals and direction. And Jennifer, do you have anything to add?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So as part of developing the next phase of the Transportation Master Plan, we will be doing a modeling analysis. And as part of that, there's opportunities to look at network greenhouse gas emissions. And the modeling process also considers induced demand caused by people changing their route of travel, their their mode of travel and their destination of travel. So that is actually captured within the modeling framework that we use.
Happy to happy to also just add on to what staff have said. I worked with staff on this motion and clarified the language with them. I think in terms of the the performance measures, you know, our climate change master plan is clear. Our T M P is now clear. Staff are looking at induced demand and G H G emission. It's a performance measure. It doesn't change the rubric that has been developed by staff in terms of evaluating those road projects. But I think the the clarity around this is that there's various investment scenarios. And obviously, in this case, G H G emissions, that'll be a metric in evaluating those scenarios as well as induced demand, which is, you know, if you if you build more roads, more people will will use them. And so they'll evaluate that as a concept in new roads to be created. I think there's a lot of connections that need to be created in our communities right now. We've been seeing a lot of road widening, but there's a lot of connections that we should be focusing on as well, separate to this motion. But I think as a as a city, we're moving in the right direction when we're considering the various induced demand and now staff have even in the first portion of this T M P. And if various other road building projects have said, look, if this is our consideration of induced demand, here's what we think it will create just as a metric for you to evaluate going forward for various road projects. So this is already part of their work. It's clarity for the next stages around transit, the importance of transit in our city and utilizing those networks first and foremost. And I think the the purpose of the project prioritization is to identify which of the identified road projects to build first. Staff have clarified that and said, look at, under this rubric, which ones do we build first based on the analysis that we've put forward? Those other ones would still be in there, but prioritized prioritization within the T M P is is important based on the rubric that's already been before by by city staff.
No, thank you very much for that clarification. I guess my my concern would be in the way that I think that's consistent with everything that I've seen in the current Transportation Master Plan Part One. My only concern is is kind of how we're looking at the performance measurements on the greenhouse gas emissions. What defines that? You know, whether we're looking kind of cradle to grave in the entire process, whether we're looking simply at what would be vehicular, whether it's, you know, included in our reduced emission buses, I'll call them as well. So I just, I'm a bit concerned about the language that's being used there and what we're setting up, you know, the public to believe we're doing and as opposed to what we're actually doing. So that would be my only hold up with that. But other than that, Mr. Mayor, thank you for your time.
I'll just I'll just add very briefly, Mayor, staff started doing some of this work in our budget process. So you saw some of the language around capital projects within the budget and staff added language to those capital projects with regard to a G H G emission. So very similar to what's already been happening in the the work that I know our climate change team and our road roads team or transportation team is doing. I just and I'll just finally just say, obviously, the the N C C raised some some concerns with it. I think this addresses it. I know, you know, the N C C is our partner. We may not always be happy with their full decisions, but they're an important and good partner for the city of Ottawa. And I think staff obviously recognize that and we work hand in hand. And so this is recognition of the letter they also sent us and in working hand in hand with them. So I'm happy to work with Counselor Brown to to amend this and appreciate Counselor Leeper second again. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Hill and Counselor Menard. Counselor Deroche.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to staff for the work they've put into this. It's a significant undertaking. But I find myself, you know, having to, it's a complex document. It's it's got considerable depth. It's a depth. It's got a vision that puts us out to over several decades, which I think the residents want us to to plan and manage the growth that we have approved. And we've committed to increasing the supply of housing in a very aggressive way. But I do find myself having to decode what is in this report and and clarify to the community that especially the growth areas of Riverside South and Philly Creek, that we will be making upgrades to the road network that will serve pedestrians, that will serve cyclists, and that will serve our transit system. So can staff confirm to me that if this is approved? So can staff confirm to me that if this is approved, projects like LITROM upgrades, Bank Street upgrades south in the South Finley Creek area, the airport parkway, can they confirm that these types of projects would, would be considered as part of the exercise that's going to happen next? I think, again, I think we need to decode this document to the residents so that they know that we are going to follow through on converting rural cross-section roads to urban cross-section roads. Not building super highways, but having the proper infrastructure to prove the growth that we have approved and will continue to improve over the course of this council.
Mr. Mayor, yes, I can confirm that those types of projects will definitely be included in the next part of the transportation master plan.
Thank you. That's assuring. Secondly, I, I was pleased to see that there's some commitment in this document to improve the connectivity with the Finley Creek residential community and the employment areas that are in there with the new LITROM LRT station. Now unfortunately, that station is probably the, the, the ugliest, the saddest, the most isolated LRT station of the entire system because of its location. If there's a candidate for a CIP, it's this area. It's built on a former federal landfill. Its next door neighbor is the airport, which puts all kinds of development constraints on it. There's no servicing in this area in terms of sewer. There's water, but not sewer. It's a rural cross-section, so it's very difficult for people to, to, to cycle or to, to walk to that station. And of course, it's surrounded by federal lands. And as we've seen with the NCC, I disagree with my colleague that, you know, it's a bit of a mixed bag in terms of, you know, whether I would define that as a partnership. So in this plan, is there some commitment that we're going to look at how we can kind of improve the accessibility of this LITROM station? We're investing millions in that transit system that will take pressure off the road network north-south. But really, that LITROM station is the ugly duckling and we need to do more than just put a little path. We've got to invest in, in the infrastructure around it. Thank you.
Counselor, thank you, Counselor DeRash.
That was a question, just, oh, is there a commitment? Yeah, 50% speech, 50% question. Like, is there, is there a question, is there? Is there a commitment that we're going to improve access to stations like LITROM? So that, you know, again, people can get to it in, in, in a proper way. And it's got a lot of shortcomings. So will this plan at least get us going on and, and on some ideas to improve the accessibility to that station there? Again, we're investing millions in it and I hope we can do a better job over the course of the next several years.
Mr. Mayor, could we confirm is, is the question related to active transportation connections or road connections?
I think it's both, right? Because right now you have a rural cross-section road and you have a lot of barriers in terms of accessing that. So whether it be for cycling or pedestrians. So again, I think we need to see a CDP for this area. Maybe it's even a, a, some sort of economic development support to get this community going. So it's, it's all means in terms of getting to the station.
So I can confirm that we will be doing a needs analysis through the next phase of the TMP that will look at the mobility needs more generally, but the focus for that will be on roads as complete streets, connections with, with cycling and, and active transportation facilities. But the active transportation list is in the, in the package that is before you today.
Thank you for the answers. That's all from me. I see I'm out of time.
Thank you, Counselor DeRash. Counselor Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In, I, I don't know if I missed something, but in the last motion from, from Counselor Kits, the last section of be it resolved that the city explore policy changes to ensure future front-ending payments that are aligned with and restricted to the revenue collected within the benefiting area defined by staff. Was that still left in or was that?
It wasn't. My apologies. It was on the back of my page, so I forgot to read it in, but it is still meant to be.
Yeah, I noticed it wasn't read in, so I thought maybe it was dropped.
No, it's, it's still included.
Okay, I have, I have questions for staff on that then because my concern is we have an equity index and for neighborhoods and that is something we use for overriding. And I'm concerned that it doesn't quite fit with, with that. And I think this is the first time I've seen this kind of direction. And it, it could, I don't know, if it had a domino effect, I'd be concerned about it. Can I get some clarification from our treasurer on this? Because I'm concerned about trying, first of all, just doing the, the work to figure out, you know, who benefits from this. Can you give me some clarification? Because I'm, I am concerned.
Mr. Mayor, I'll start off and maybe my colleague Don might want to top me up. But what I will say is that we are already reviewing the current front-end policy. So my, my teams and Don's team are already going through that process. So we're already looking into that element. So we probably already addressed that component of the motion. But maybe Don, I'm not sure if you want to top anything up on that.
No, thanks, Cyril. That, that is correct. We're currently reviewing the development charge by law coming forward in 2024. And as part of that, we're looking at the whole front-ending piece. So this is just one of the, one of the avenues we'll be exploring.
My concern is it's how does that work with neighborhood equity index? Because when we prioritize areas that tend not to have a strong voice, but are the most in need.
Thanks for the question, Counselor. And Mr. Mayor, I think the, the counselor's intention here is, is, is not, you know, from an equity point of view, it's, it's tying development charge revenue to the area where it's collected for front-ending projects. So it's, it's just a different way of, of collecting and expending development charge dollars that we'll be exploring through our review of the bylaw.
Okay, it's just that it's tied in with the whole transportation master plan. And I just didn't want to get into an area of getting funding because they have development charges versus, you know, our overall plan. I wasn't thinking in terms of development charges. I was thinking in terms of just our strategy of, of connectivity for people. So are you saying that it's two different things?
I'm saying it, it's, it's an avenue we're exploring through, through the development charge by law review and will be coming back to committee and council on the recommended approach.
Okay, well, we're just getting this today, so I, I, I just want to make sure because it could have a domino effect. And that's my, my concern of, of sectioning money for, for an area, just in terms of, you know, because there's some areas that will not get development charges yet are very much in need. And I want to see, I want to see excellence across the city, but I just want to make sure that there's some equity here. And can you assure me of that?
Perhaps I'll ask the development charge lead, Charmaine Ford, to see if she can layer on to my comments.
Thank you for that, Mr. Mayor. We will be looking, as Don mentioned, on the whole review of the bylaw. So this is something that we will be exploring. There's two pieces. One is the bylaw. The DC bylaw will be, is reviewed. And also the front-ending agreement is being under review. So there'll be more opportunities and we're just exploring this. This isn't directing us. It's asking us to explore it. Thank you.
Okay, just want to make sure it's not jumping ahead when we haven't figured that out yet. That was my concern. So you're assuring me this is only for a study to be, but we haven't dealt with the big subject.
It's to explore it and to look at if this would be considered a city. This right now is either city-wide collection or area-specific. It's asking us to explore it in relation to the front-ending, the front-ending policy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Kavanaugh. Counselor Kits.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a lot of ground to cover in five minutes. So I'll try and speak to all my motions and I appreciate everybody's indulgence. To begin, similar to Counselor Carr's comments, I want to sincerely thank staff. You know, yesterday I was at the city building summit and, Mr. Mayor, you said one of the things that impressed you most when you came to the city is the expertise of our staff. I'm, I'm paraphrasing, but, and I want to acknowledge that after raising concerns at committee, I really felt listened to and understood about what was included and what might not have been included in the draft. And I've had several conversations with staff since and we've been working to address my concerns in a way that they were also comfortable with. And I also want to thank my colleagues. I've had great conversations with many of you about our discussions at Transportation Committee and how that inspired reflection on challenges that exist in different parts of the city and in specific neighborhoods. And I think, you know, we come to this table to advocate for our wards, but we make decisions that affect the entire city. So I think that's so important. And I think the willingness to look at things from another counselor's point of view or different residents' point of view will make us a better council and a better city. So with that, all the motions I've presented are staff-supported. The first one speaks to adding a critical link from the communities of Bradley Estates, Trails Edge, and Chapel Hill South to the proposed crosstown bikeway network. And if you're at committee, this is the gap that I highlighted on one of the many maps that I, I put up on the screen. The previous council actually passed a motion from Counselor Dudas, who, who used to be responsible for this area. And thank you for seconding this, which asked staff to consider Navin Road in this update that we're considering today. So it was already in progress and just really want to cement it in the plan by drawing a line on the map. For the second motion, and thank you to Counselor Lula for seconding, I think where I was most uncomfortable with what was in front of us initially was that I didn't feel like there was an acknowledgement about how rapid growth is being addressed and how some communities have really fallen behind in terms of having different mobility options. Our growth management strategy has put the lion's share of development in communities like South Orleans, but our infrastructure investment has not kept up with that rapid pace of growth. And we want residents to have mobility options. You know, I won't wax on about it as long as I did at committee. I promised Counselor Leeper I wouldn't. But my ward is grappling with inadequate transit service, commute times seven minutes to two hours one way, missing and unsafe active transportation connections, a lack of walkable amenities and employment, and crippling congestion that not only increases emissions but compromises road safety. So we are just adding language to, to clarify and acknowledge that these factors will be addressed as we move forward with the prioritization framework for part two. Moving on to the third motion, there is a theme here and I do apologize for not reading out that, that last therefore be it resolved. This motion also responds to substantial increase in growth and in new, new housing starts and subdivision projects in certain areas of the city. I've had a front seat to the rapid growth that is happening in the East End in my ward. And I, I don't think that we're growing in a healthy way. And I, I do want to thank the mayor for seconding this. I think it's, it's crucial that we prioritize and invest in major transportation infrastructure projects to support this growth and this intensification in those neighborhoods. If we want to meet the stated goals in our official plan, we need to develop these areas into 15-minute communities. This will promote healthy, connected streets and, and really foster sustainable urban development. So we are expecting an increase in the percentage of funding allocated to sustainable transportation projects in the TMP Capital Infrastructure Plan compared to previous plans. Similarly, the collection of development charges for funding for transportation infrastructure to support growth and infot- intensification also needs to reflect this shift and is stated in the same policies. So I believe leveraging both the long-term financial plan process that is already underway and the upcoming DC background study and DC bylaw update, I think we can be proactive and strategic in our financial planning to ensure that we can meet transportation needs of growing communities. And I think it's important that these funding mechanisms align with the policies that will support sustainable growth and that our report, approach remains flexible. Just really quickly, I don't have much time on the Menard motion. I want to thank Counselor Menard for considering the suggestion to exclude rural communities. But I, I want to hone in on the last line of the motion that says where alternatives to private vehicles are more widely available. So while I fully agree that there are limited alternatives in the rural area, there are certain areas of the city like South Orleans Navin where there are limited options and alternatives as well. And you all know how, how critical the Brian Coburn project is to my ward. It, it's a road project, but it's also a bus rapid transit project, an active transportation project. And so for that reason, I'm not comfortable supporting this, including South Orleans Navin, or South Orleans rather, in, in that, in the motion. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Kits. Counselor Brockington.
Thank you, Mayor. Through you to Mr. Herwire. The final Counselor Kits motion, the allocating increased funding to major transportation infrastructure projects in areas of significant new development. The therefore clause reads, therefore be it resolved that through the development of the long-range financial plan, staff investigate opportunities to sufficiently and affordably fund major transportation infrastructure projects in areas experiencing significant rapid growth. Does this mean that these communities experiencing significant rapid growth will take priority over other neighborhoods that have the same needs, same gaps in either active transportation or major transportation infrastructure projects? Does this motion give some neighborhoods priority over others?
Mr. Mayor, thank you for the question, Counselor. No, in my opinion, it does not prioritize one neighborhood or, or one community over another.
Why is this motion necessary?
Are you, who are you directing the question to?
I want staff to explain why this motion, then you support it. Why is it necessary? If we're already going to do it, if it doesn't re-prioritize one neighborhood over another, what's the benefit of this motion?
I think perhaps, similar to an earlier discussion, the benefit is it, it pulls, pulls it all together in one place in terms of, you know, that action that the city's undertaking. And, you know, it's, it's front of mind and clear for everyone. So again, it provides some clarity to work underway or that will be undertaken.
We're potentially talking about neighborhoods that have not yet been built. And yet residents who live in older communities, I have two in particular built 75, 80 years ago, don't have infrastructure. We built neighborhoods 80 years ago without bike infrastructure, without sidewalks. Kids walked to school in Carlington without a sidewalk network. And so they're saying, wait a minute, we're going to start prioritizing one community or communities to be built over others. I, I'm very concerned with motions like this because I think the optics are poor. And we're saying that certain districts or areas are more important or should have resources prioritized in their favor over others. I think many of us who represent neighborhoods that are older, that simply have significant infrastructure gaps, could step up and say, well, my residents have been paying taxes for decades. Where's their infrastructure? Where, where are their? So I have, I have significant concerns with this motion before us. I do think that when you look at the active transportation projects listed for Riverward in particular, there are many good things on that list, but there are many things that are not there. And my question for staff is, is the list that has been provided by ward constrained by dollars? Or does staff actually believe this is an exhaustive list of all active transportation projects that are needed in the ward?
Mr. Mayor, the first part of the question was whether we're constrained in terms of a certain number of dollars per ward. That was not a, a direction that we had. And so we used our policies and looked at gaps to focus on where the needs were greatest. And that's how we decided where to allocate project dollars. He, I mean, however, as, as, as was mentioned in some of the previous presentations, we're still working currently within a total envelope of 350 million over the planned period. And that could be reviewed in, in stage two of the plan. So therefore, we have, your, your second part of the point was, were there gaps that we were not able to fill with this plan? And unfortunately, yes, there were. And it's simply a matter of many of those gaps being very expensive projects. And we had to choose the list of projects that in fact did fit the current budget.
Staff said in an early line of questioning, they're going to come back to each counselor and talk about prioritizing the list that they have before us. That's going to and talk about prioritizing the list that they have before us that's going to be approved today. But I think if you're going through an extensive TMP review, the onus is on staff to give us the entire picture. Where are all the gaps per ward that exist that we want to identify? We're not supposed to be constrained by dollars yet. Identify where all those gaps exist that have come through through public consultation and put it out there. And then we go through a prioritization process. Yes, there has to be financial caps to this, but there are important areas within my ward not even addressed in this list. So there's some good things on the list, some things that I've been championing, my community's been championing. But we talk about the importance of inner neighborhood connectivity, pathways and sidewalks to schools and parks, bike route spines within neighborhoods, a lack of any segregated bike infrastructure and arterial roads in River Ward, and the reliance on the NCC Pathway Network to move people, shuttle people. And so I'm very concerned that the process really should have identified all of the desired additions to active transportation in the ward. And then staff and the councilor sit down and say, all right, here's the list. Help us prioritize that list over the next seven years. And that's where I'm concerned because my residents will see this list and say, hey, we went through a very detailed process with you before COVID. I had sidewalk working groups. I had a cycling working group. We created a list of about 85 areas that needed improvement. Some are identified in the list that's before us today and others are not there. And I think that is, to me, a major flaw in this process, particularly since it's a major review. We should identify where the gaps exist and then talk about how we're going to prioritize and fund them. So yes, staff have done great work. The TMP is a major document, certainly put it on the same level as the OP. But that is a constant thing I hear in my ward. And a major pillar of my campaign is active transportation. COVID underscored the importance of neighborhoods and staying within a neighborhood and enjoying the amenities in the neighborhood. And if people can't go for a jog or a walk with the grandkids or stroll to the park because there's no sidewalks to get them to school or safely go for a bike ride, that is an issue. And I think that's why this is so important. But I wanted to get that on the record, Mr. Mayor, and provide those comments. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I respond to some of the concerns?
Sure.
Okay, so just to provide some clarity. So at committee, I raised several concerns. In this part one, we have five active transportation wards, or sorry, active transportation projects out of 244 that reside in Orleans South Navin. We are creating policies that say we're going to prioritize modes of transportation that frankly don't exist in my ward. And there are zero equity priority neighborhoods east of Blair Road. In addition to that, one-fifth of the development in the city approximately is happening in my ward. So I felt like there was a lack of recognition for that explosive development and how the TMP is working to address that. It's not meant to reprioritize my ward. It's just to, an acknowledgement that I think already exists but wasn't reflected in the plan to say, we recognize that some wards are growing exponentially. We recognize that there's an infrastructure gap. And as we embark on part two, we are going to address that, like we're addressing other missing gaps in the city. So that was really what I was looking to achieve. Staff helped me work with the language to make sure that it wasn't putting, you know, Orleans South over any other ward. But that was really the genesis of the motion. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Catherine. Counselor Kits. Counselor Devine, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So first on to, as to the Menard Leeper motion with regards to consideration of projects with regards to GHG emissions and induced demand, that motion there for me is an example of why I'm happy that we are approving policy prior to delaying it for setting policy with projects. Because in the current policy, as I read it, I was very happy and enthused to see such a focus on induced demand. I don't have the 2013 policy before me, but I'm not sure if the concept of induced demand would have been as prevalent in the 2013 policy as it is right now. And so any, and I do encourage all of my colleagues to support the Menard Leeper motion because if it does imply that there'd be consideration of induced demand and therefore GHG emissions tied to any road projects, I think that will help us make decisions that are very much for the betterment and the good of the city as a whole. So I appreciate that Menard Leeper motion. I will be supporting that one. With regards to the Kits motions, I'll admit, I'm certainly wrestling with not so much the first Kits motion, but the second and third. And I so very much appreciate that Counselor Kits is being a champion for her ward. I think that is commendable. And again, here we are as counselors, wrestling between, you know, advocating for the needs of our wards as expressed to us by our communities and then consideration for the city as a whole. And I've been trying to grapple with the implications of the second and third Kits motions, but I think I am of the similar mind that Counselor Brockington is. Counselor Brockington and I both, you know, live in established wards. And it does feel like, because in one breath, I interpret Counselor Kits' second and third motions as merely advocating for a greater number of projects in their ward as opposed to five out of 224. But in the other way, I look at it as, you know, the implementation of a very broad policy, which would have lengthy, long-term implications. And it feels to me like the approval of the policy changes set forth in the second and third Kits motions would end up reinforcing the status quo that we were trying to move away from. It does feel... And the fact that, you know, Counselor Brockington asked a very clear question about how whether or not these motions would prioritize infrastructure to those areas of rapid growth. And the answer from GM Herwire was, no, it would not. But in reading the motion to myself, it does feel like it would. And so it feels like to a certain extent, there's a lack of clarity in the motion, which would possibly lead to the question of why have the motion there? But I do feel that the approval of the policy changes set forth in those motions would continue to prioritize infrastructure to areas of rapid growth. When we are trying to, as I understand it, de-incentivize rapid growth to outlying areas, there is a critical infrastructure gap in my wards. Once in a while, I dream of what my ward could look like by going onto Google Maps and looking at what it looks like in the other wards, and I don't have that. And so I'm concerned that this would be reinforcing some things. 50% speech now, 50% questions. One question for the second Kits... Pardon me? Damn. Quick question. With regards to the second Kits motion, reframing the policy around prioritizing projects in areas with unmet demand, which yes, would be good for the city, not just for outlying wards. Question to staff, the question I have is how would this be determined? The metrics on that would need to be really, really clear and linked to desired policy outcomes. So could you answer, how would you be measuring prioritizing projects in areas of unmet demand?
So, Mr. Mayor, so as part of the modeling exercise for the next part of the TMP, we'll be looking at various metrics to assess the performance of the transportation network. So we'll be looking at the volume of traffic demand versus the capacity of the network. We'll be looking at the vehicle hours of travel, so the delays on the network and the congestion. And so those are the types of metrics that we would be quantifying and use to identify where there is greatest mobility needs. And then that information feeds into the selection of projects.
Thank you. For my remaining 40 seconds, I was going to sing the beginnings of Bohemian Rhapsody, but I'll just let it go and just leave it at that. Thank you.
Glad we've been spared that. Thank you, Counselor Devine. Counselor Troster.
I just have to say, I feel like I'm being forced to choose between my new suburbs and my old suburbs friends. And I just want every ward to have what they need. I just have a question for the mover. When you use the phrase, this is for 17.1, Counselor Kits, when you say, use the phrase, "Areas experience significant rapid growth", do you mean only in Orleans South Navin? The reason I ask this is because many downtown wards are experiencing incredible intensification at a rapid rate, and it's straining our own transportation infrastructure.
Yes, thank you for that clarification. No, it is not pertaining specifically to my ward. These are citywide policies that will apply to every neighborhood. I just want to make sure that growth is acknowledged.
Right, because we have the majority of new development downtown. We have rapidly aging infrastructure. I just want to, I have a question for staff. So I'm constantly hearing from our outer urban colleagues about the need for some sort of retrofit program for neighborhoods that were built with 50s and 60s standards, where we have families living now where they want sidewalks, but the sewers are not old enough to tear up the street and build those sidewalks as part of a rebuild. So will there be an opportunity in part two of the TMP to design a retrofit program specifically for those older neighborhoods?
Mr. Mayor, yes, that is one of the policies in the draft TMP document is to look at the opportunity to establish a standalone complete streets program. And the funding for that would be explored as part of the update to the Long Range Financial Plan.
Okay, and I just say, I heartily support that because I think it's extremely important. I think it's also important to take a look at arterials that are actually highly residential, like Kent Street in downtown Ottawa. Similar situation, it's a four-lane highway through our downtown. It really should be a complete street. And right now, there's no program for me to make it one because the sewers are not old enough to have to rip it up and redo it. So I am going to support Counselor Kits' motion, 17.1, because I still fundamentally believe that we need the transportation infrastructure to support the areas of rapid growth and that that isn't just the far suburbs, it is in the core. But I also will heartily support the development of a retrofit program for the older suburbs in the next stage of the TMP. And I also support Counselor Menard's motion. I think project scoring can be a little difficult for residents to parse. So I think the explicit language around induced demand is really important, and thanks for bringing that forward.
Thank you, Counselor Troster. Counselor Carr?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So generally, my comments on the Transportation Master Plan, there's lots of documentation to review. I'm pleased overall to see support for a plan that aims to move us towards the goals in the official plan. I will say that I always look at the documents and think, you know, it's great that we have a goal of being the most livable city by 2046. I would like to be a livable, just simply a livable city now. And so despite not supporting deferral, though, I'm still concerned the list is a bit aspirational. And I say this from a place that in 2013, many of the projects in the TMP were not realized within my ward. And however, I, you know, one of the pieces that helped me move off the notion of deferral was the understanding that there is a funding envelope this time attached to the TMP that was not in place the last time. And there's an allocation of 350 million. And also that these projects, and when I look at them, I agree that, you know, these projects tend to link more to active transportation infrastructure and are not as independent. Can I just get a staff comment on those, confirming those two points before I move on to my next question?
Mr. Mayor, the 350 million that we describe as being part of the funding for active transportation in this plan is based on an expectation that the ongoing funding for the three key programs that are used to fund active transportation will continue. I will just correct that in 2013, we had a similar arrangement through finance. And in the 2013 plan, it was intended, those projects were intended to run until 2031. And so we did only complete part of them until this review occurred before the end of the original planning period for 2013.
Okay, so some of that money has been re-profiled, then?
Yes, the ongoing money that's provided annually would then flip over as of the 2024 budget year to be applied to these new projects that will potentially be approved today.
Okay, perfect. And so I have one last question, and I actually will have a slide to show with it. And I heard loud and clear from Counselor Brockington and other inner urban ward counselors that there were concerns with Counselor Kits' motion to an extent that we're prioritizing areas of high growth. And I think one of the things that we struggle with in our, I'm sort of inner and outer urban ward is, you know, I heard Counselor Kits, I heard you speak about communities falling behind with rapid growth. And I think what's happened to us is we have fallen behind in terms of upkeep of existing assets. And, you know, I understand there's two buckets of money that there is, you know, this is funding for Transportation Master Plan. But simply keeping up with the assets in our ward is really challenging. And I think that's where a lot of the feelings come about prioritizing projects within other wards when we become the victim. And I'll just, Melinda, if you have the slides, I just want to ask a question, but I'll show you some visuals first. These are my sidewalks on Alta Vista Drive, and that's the result of delays and delays. And my colleague said, you know, they don't look good when they're wet. They're not wet. And, you know, I'll go to the next slide as well. This is Pleasant Park Road, been uplifted by trees. So there is no mobility, there is no ability to use these sidewalks. I'll go to the next one, which is a walking path, Playfair Park Walkway. You can't wear sandals on this path because you will get asphalt in your toes. And so I think, you know, my question from this is, you know, I understand the frustration. I understand when we're prioritizing things. I'd like to, and I think my fear of this list of projects is, how are we prioritizing these? A lot of those projects link to these existing projects, and I'm worried about delays that may happen with these projects because our asset management projects are delayed. Alta Vista Drive redesign is delayed years and years and years. And so can you speak to how the prioritization of those TMP projects within the list will work with the renewal of current asset management? So we don't fall further behind and see these new projects delayed?
So as part of the next phase of the Transportation Master Plan update, we will be updating the Long Range Financial Plan. And the growth projects that the Transportation Plan deals with feed into that Long Range Financial Plan. But so also do the maintenance costs that the city incurs as well. And so that update will holistically be looking at the various transportation elements that the city would be delivering.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I can speak to the asset management question as well. And so we are bringing back to council updated transportation asset management plans, which will include level of service in conjunction with the Long Range Financial Plan. So that will be coming in this term of council as well.
Yeah, I certainly appreciate that. I guess my big fear is, given the delays that consistently happen, and I'll use Bank Street redesign as an example. I mean, as a community member, I attended those consultations in 2012. And we are beginning, the very beginning phase of that this summer. And that's just a sewer pipe replacement that has delayed Alta Vista redesign. So that, it's not only road, it's the sidewalks. I'm concerned that my TMP projects, my active transportation projects will be delayed because they connect to the active transportation projects that are part of the asset management. That won't happen? I mean, you're speaking, you're going to bring back the finances. I'm worried about the overall, when you're looking at a picture and how to prioritize the TMP projects, are you going to say, well, there's no point in putting this in because the sidewalks it connects to for the asset management renewal are six years delayed?
Mr. Mayor, as we are deciding when to sequence and timing for active transportation project implementation, planning may happen, but implementation timing does take into account coordination with asset renewals, be they rebuilds or resurfacing. And it is important for the plan because of the massive cost savings that will result in that sort of a coordination. So in short, the answer is delays in rebuilds can and do can and do delay associated active transportation projects.
Okay, that's what I thought, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Carr. Counselor Curry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So on all of Counselor Kits' motions, I'll be supporting them, and they're not even remotely parochial, I would add. I think she's made that point many, many times. I think that if you think about some of the challenges Counselor Gower has in Stittsville, the concept, you know, we have a few things in Kanata where, you know, you just can't get there from here. But this will set a precedent for the thinking that will happen when we have to look at Taywin. You know, there's... You know, there there's all kinds of challenges in the city where the road infrastructure is not even there. So I really appreciate that this is going to be something that's a priority. For the the Counselor Menard motion, the, I just want to ask staff, the wording here is that staff include explicit consideration. What is that? What does that mean to staff? Explicit consideration?
I think there is an updated wording there that I believe it's due consideration.
It was changed to do?
Yeah.
And what does do consideration mean as opposed to consideration? Yeah, what does, what does do consideration?
Mr. Mayor, so the intent is that we would look at that with, that we would specifically look at, excuse me, the the induced demand in greenhouse gas emissions as a one element of the broader evaluation that would take place as we develop the road and transit networks.
Okay, and so you would look at GHG emissions in the development and evaluation of the transit and road networks. Does that mean like beforehand you'd go out and measure the GHG emissions and then afterwards measure them?
No. So what that would mean, so when we're developing this plan, we would be looking, we're looking out to a horizon year of 2046. And so what we'll be doing is forecasting the future amount of travel activity based on the approved development from the official plan. And from that, we'll be estimating the amount of travel that's associated with that development and the modes of transportation that are used. And from that information, we'll be able to estimate what the greenhouse gas and induced demand would be under different network scenarios. It's done at a network level, so it looks at, you know, as a as a complete network with an integrated set of transit projects and road projects. How would people travel? And then what would the associated emissions be with that scenario versus a different scenario?
Thank you for that. So in effect, if you had an area of town that was unbelievably congested and there was significant greenhouse gas emissions because the traffic was so jammed up there all the time, so the people living there had to deal with constant, you know, exhaust because it's back, you know, bumper to bumper traffic, nobody moving for long stretches of the day, that high amount of greenhouse gas emissions may warrant a wide, a road widening for more lanes to have people moving.
Mr. Mayor, so to clarify, the the estimation of emissions is based primarily at this sort of network level on the amount of travel. So the, there are other models that are very operational in nature that would look at stop and go traffic conditions, and they're usually focused on a on a small stretch of the road. This would be looking at a network level analysis, and it will be saying, what is the total kilometers of travel by by vehicles? What's the makeup of the vehicle fleet in terms of the penetration of electric vehicles and the fuel efficiency of what gas vehicles are in that fleet? And then based on the fuel consumption associated with that, how much greenhouse gas emissions are produced? So congestion would not directly feed into that analysis. Where it will feed in is where we identify specific projects to address that congestion.
And so you would have to understand how many electric cars and gas cars are on the road at a high level?
Mr. Mayor, that is correct, and we'll be taking our guidance from the energy evolution strategy that was approved last term.
Can you imagine the accuracy with which you'd come up with a and be able to demonstrate proof, evidence of a change based on a decision we make?
Again, Mr. Mayor, so the intent is to determine which scenario to move forward with. So we're looking at primarily at the relative difference between the different scenarios. So is one scenario perform better in terms of greenhouse gas emissions than a different scenario?
All right, I think this is largely theoretical at times when we talk about these things and not actually based on accurate real data that we have on a particular street. However, if if staff feel that they'd be able to do that and then put it in a report and give us some evidence of what they determined, that's fine. And then the last motion from Counselor Plante, do we have yet a comment from staff on what they think about this, the change in language?
So I do, I think we know that the motion was staff supported.
That's, that's correct. The the revised motion reflects the staff input and enabled staff to support the final motion.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Curry, Counselor Johnson.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So this, this is how I started misspeaking the other time, but I was hoping that staff could comment on how you tested for the scoring frameworks that are present in Phase One.
Mr. Mayor, so the process that we used was to identify about 10 or so projects from the previous TMP that were approved. And we, we did not redo a complete technical analysis of them, but we looked at some of the performance metrics associated with those projects when they are evaluated back in in 2013 and looked at the performance with the new, the new framework.
So the framework that was presented to us in Phase One, you have a reasonable confidence that it will predict the prioritization of projects that are appropriate with Phase One of the TMP?
Mr. Mayor, yes, that is correct. And I would also just note that the weighting is very similar to the prioritization frameworks that were used in the previous TMP because we started with that as the foundation of refining it for for this version.
So when we look at the the elements within this prioritization framework, the idea for potential of induced demand and GSG, GHB, GHG admissions is is in there. Support for transit is in there. So these these different pieces are that are within many of these motions today are actually already in the prioritization networks that are part of the Phase One of the TMP?
So, Mr. Mayor, to clarify, the the prioritization frameworks, yes, they do include induced demand and greenhouse gas emissions. The motion in question speaks to also considering that as part of the the identification of projects and and development of the networks, which is actually the step before we prioritize the projects that make up the networks.
Okay, but within the language of the TMP, did we not specifically say that we would be considering the Energy Evolution Plan and induced demand as part of this?
Again, the, there is mention of greenhouse gas in the evaluation framework. I do not believe that induced demand was specifically referenced.
In the body of the text, though, I believe that it was covered off.
In the body of the policy document, yes, that is correct.
Yeah, so I, so I think, I think what what's happening here for many of these motions is that we're trying to create a more predictive understanding of what Phase Two will define for us. And so I'm actually going to be bold and suggest that I'm not going to be supporting any of the motions on the table today. I I feel that we have adequate information to be considering the Energy Evolution Plan as described. And I would be concerned that we would be creating an element of risk that could create alternative consequences that weren't already defined in the TMP. So for those reasons, I I think that we have done our due diligence, that the framework, prioritization framework was robustly tested and that we will be able to see these priorities set forward. I've made mention to staff many times that as part of Phase Two, I expect to see an evaluation plan that would help us to understand how to review the TMP's progress against our guiding principles every five years or every so many years as defined. And we'll be expecting that as part of our conversations between now and 2025. How how is that evaluate, evaluation framework going to look? But again, I think as a policy document, this is a strong policy document, and I'd like to see us move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Counselor Hill, I see you have your hand up, but I know you already spoke, so.
I'm just looking to speak as there are five motions. I spoke to one motion earlier. It's at your discretion if you wish not, your call.
I did, I don't want to be a stickler, but I was clear that we were speaking about everything, everything at the at the beginning. And and Counselor Gower already acknowledged he can't go again, so sorry. But Counselor Leeper?
Thank you very much, Mayor. My question is really brief, I think, with respect to transit priority or sorry, TMP equity neighborhoods. There is an appendix that contains which neighborhoods those are. How will the TMP take into account the changing circumstances of neighborhoods moving forward? Is there a wriggle room to add and subtract equity priority neighborhoods from the TMP?
So, Mr. Mayor, the equity priority neighborhoods could be reviewed as part of any work that's done in the future to update the neighborhood equity index, which is what they are based on.
I'm sorry, so what is the mechanism by which that would happen?
So again, if and when the neighborhood equity index was updated, then we would review whether that would prompt any changes to that TMP equity mapping. And if if that were to happen over the course of the next two years, that could be considered as part of Part Two, otherwise it would be part of the next TMP update.
Okay, so that would be staff initiated and somebody is assigned to track the evolution of the neighborhood index?
That is correct, and as as part of our policies, that is the key element of of a number of the policies that we maintain that information up to date.
Okay, and it's the Ottawa Neighborhood Index, that's the the fundamental set of metrics that define an equity neighborhood?
Yes.
Fantastic. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Leeper. Counselor Dudas?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I I have a question about Counselor Plante's motion. So I'm not sure that staff can actually deliver on what's being asked. My understanding is that any decision on an interprovincial bridge is strictly federal jurisdiction. So I was curious if staff could provide some context in respect to if what's being asked here, in particular, the piece about, you know, the information being shared with council prior to the finalization of a decision. Once again, my understanding is this is their decision. Can staff actively follow through on what this motion is asking for?
So, Mr. Mayor, the intent of the wording is to clarify that staff as part of regular work in being part of the the steering committees for interprovincial projects would make sure that the study process captures the different crossing demands and looks at routing of trucks through the downtown and how they would access the different crossings so that the technical analysis is done correctly and that that information would be presented to council for for their information. It doesn't specify in terms of a decision, in terms of who the final decision would be, just that staff would be actively engaged with the NCC to define how those studies are conducted, to make sure that they're done in a way that the information is there on all of the the impacts and assumptions that are appropriate.
So isn't that, wouldn't that have happened anyway? I'm just, I think we're setting ourselves up for the assumption that we have some kind of oversight over what their decision is. We know they've resurrected this study. God, I can't even count how many times. It seems like every 10 years they say, well, we're going to build an interprovincial bridge, and then we have to look at it all over again, and everybody gets upset. And then they throw their hands up and say we're walking away for another 10 years. So I just want to make sure that we're being absolutely clear with residents in all the areas of the city in which the the NCC and the federal government are looking at in that, you know, absolutely, the city's at the table at the moment. But are they actually asking our permission for anything? Are they actually engaging with us in terms of the impacts that whatever location they decide on will have on our infrastructure, our taxpayers, our dollars?
So, Mr. Mayor, to clarify, that's the intent that we would be at the table with the NCC to make sure that the city's interests are being represented in those discussions.
So I, sorry, I'm starting again in the weeds here. I don't mean to be, you know, bantering back and forth here. But the city's interests, we don't actually get to say whether the feds build a bridge. If they want to build a bridge, they build a bridge. We can stomp our feet and say not this area, not that area. We can, we can say, you know, this opportunity is better than another. This one's more detrimental than another. But at the end of the day, federal government comes and says we need a bridge, they're going to build a bridge. Am I wrong on this?
Mr. Mayor, that that's correct.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I think the federal government does have the jurisdiction, the authority. But I I think it's fair to say that, you know, they would consult with us, they would. We would, we would have a seat at the table for those discussions.
So so in a fashion where we would be involved in the conversation, but not the decision?
Well, I'm.
It would depend on the weight of the government of the day weighing our word in terms of how how good a partner they want to be with us.
I think that's a better way of putting it. I think they would hear her input and hopefully, you know, that would be reflected in their decisions.
Okay, I really appreciate that, and I don't mean to belabor this point. And I I truly understand where the counselor is coming from in terms of this motion. I've been down this road, sorry to use that pun that comes to the TMP, but I've been down this road with this bridge twice over now in my past life as a community volunteer, living in the area. I cannot support this motion. I find that anytime that we think that we have some say over what the feds want to do, we find ourselves in the wrong because they either do one way or the other, and it's their way or the highway. Once again, I'm all puns today. So I appreciate it. I do know we need solutions to truck traffic in the core. We absolutely have to do that. But I don't want to pretend that the city has more weight in this discussion than what we actually do, which at this point is none. So I I will not be supporting this motion because I do not want to send the misinformation to the community that we will have the ultimate say when we know we don't.
Thank you, Counselor Dudas. Counselor Lowe?
Thank you, Chair. I I really appreciate, and I believe Counselor Kit's motion about the 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 second one is incredibly important because it it baselines the initial transportation capacity requirements. Like, we have a lot of residential developments that are being approved in newer areas of the city. And it gets approved, and immediately there's a transportation deficit because projects that are on the books are actually what are actually the condition for approving a lot of those communities. Think about Half Moon Bay, which has gone from 5,000 to, I believe, 25,000 in the last 15 years. But the Green Bank realignment, which is supposed to be a multimodal corridor for the community to get to the rest of Barhaven and out of Barhaven, continues to to get deferred and continues to, yeah, continues to be deferred. So there there are a lot of infrastructure, there are a lot of corridors that don't exist. And and a lot of these situations where we kind of get into these immediate transportation deficits, I think are important to address. This is especially important for my ward as well because a lot of the traffic from Half Moon Bay, a lot of the traffic from Riverside South and Manette all flow through my ward because there's, there's just insufficient infrastructure otherwise. So I want to, yeah, I am thankful for this motion, and I would be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lowe. Counselor Tierney?
Great, I'll keep my comments brief as a quick wrap up. I want to thank all my colleagues around the table. We've had some great discussions between committee and here today. Finally, I desperately wanted to chair this committee again because I thought I was going to do the TMP last term. And and I was so entrenched and involved with it. But now we're finally at the day where we're actually going to put a policy forward that's going to make our city a much more livable and better place to be. That being said, I want to thank our professional staff that have spent countless hours. Even Vivi was on phone calls last night on our holidays, speaking to members of council to ensure that we had this in place. I also want to acknowledge it's going to be a loss for the city. Islatko, I did make mention during our our committee meeting, is going on to a new career path, but will be desperately missed by the cycling community, by staff here. And and thank you for all your work that you've done within our city. Lastly, this is a very important vote today, and I look forward to seeing a great deal of support around the table for this. And let's move forward as a city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Tierney. Counselor Kit, did you want to say something as a wrap up?
Can I wrap up all my motions? Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much. I just wanted to say in closing, I appreciate the, some of the concerns that have been raised by my colleagues. I hope I've clarified, I'm not trying to disrupt equity or equitable investment across the city. And I said this at committee, but I'll say it again. Yes, of course, I am advocating for my ward, but I'm also advocating for our city to build healthy communities. I have always struggled with the fact that we have this ambitious, forward-thinking, brand-new official plan that talks about sustainable transportation in 15-minute communities. And yet, the area And yet, the area of the city where we're currently building, where we have that blank slate, where people haven't bought that second car, we are not giving those communities the option to be those healthy 15-minute neighborhoods. And I really appreciate councillor Lowe's comments because by putting these projects in the plan and then not realizing them, they are used as the rationale for higher density. My ward does not look like councillor Luloff or councillor Dudas' ward. It is much higher density. And we are putting those, as councillor Lowe said, you're at an immediate infrastructure deficit as soon as they're created. Residents in my area do drive because their bus commute to downtown is 90 minutes one way because their bike route is Innes Road or Reno Road. It's not safe because there is no ability to walk to amenities or to your workplace. From Bradley Estates, as an example, to the closest grocery store, it is an hour walk to the grocery store. It is a 30-minute transit trip if your bus shows up. So if the goal of this T M P is to increase the share of trips by sustainable transportation modes, then we need those options to exist, not only in South Orleans, but everywhere in the city where we're experiencing growth. And I do want our city to grow in a healthy way and realize that modal shift. So we need to account for, for growth in that equation. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Kits. Councillor Menard, did you want to wrap up on your motion as well?
Just one minute. Thank you so much, Mayor. Appreciate that. The discussion around the table has been very good. I think it's important to recognize, obviously, if you live in a suburban community, there's a battle sometimes between connectivity and road widening, right? There's a lot of areas, Green Bank realignment, you can think about Barhaven, Orleans, Navin, where there's connectivity issues. It's not just a road widening issue. And I think we have to always balance those out, and there's sometimes we pick and choose. I think this motion helps on the connectivity issue. It really does because it speaks to the balancing that we do on the money that we're going to be spending on road prioritization. And if you're looking for connectivity in your communities, this is the type of thing that would help you get that connectivity, oversee some other projects that may be very expensive but not give you that connectivity under the current framework. Staff, support the motion, and I appreciate you bringing it forward and working with, with me to refine the language as well as the rural area councillors who expressed a friendly amendment, which I think is, which is important. So, Mayor, I hope that this motion can be supported and just appreciate the discussion around the table today.
Thank you, councillor Menard. So let's move to voting on each, each motion. I'm, in the interest of time, I mean, we can do a recorded vote on these motions if you want to, or we can simply register people's dissent on each, on each item. I think that would be faster if people are comfortable with that. So on councillor Menard's motion, is that carried?
Said.
Need dissent? Okay. Okay, let's do a recorded vote on that then, please.
Councillor Duroch?
No.
Councillor Brown?
Yes.
Councillor Devine?
Yes.
Councillor Johnson?
No.
Councillor Dudas?
No.
Councillor Bradley?
Yes.
Councillor Gower?
Yes.
Councillor King?
Yes.
Councillor Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Councillor Menard?
Yes.
Councillor Luloff?
No.
Councillor Brockington?
Yes.
Councillor Daruz?
No.
Councillor Currie?
No.
Councillor Lowe?
No.
Councillor Kits?
No.
Councillor Tierney?
No.
Councillor Carr?
Yes.
Councillor Leeper?
Yes.
Councillor Kelly?
Yes.
Councillor Plante?
Oui.
Councillor Troster?
Yes.
Councillor Hill?
No.
Councillor Hubley? Mayor Sackliff?
Yes.
I have 14 yeas and 10 nays.
Okay, carried. All right, on councillor Plante's motion then, is that carried?
There, dissent.
Okay. All right, we'll do it again.
Councillor Duroch?
Yes.
Councillor Brown?
Yes.
Councillor Devine?
Yes.
Councillor Johnson?
Oh.
Councillor Dudas?
No.
Councillor Bradley?
Yes.
Councillor Gower?
Yes.
Councillor King?
No.
Councillor Kavanaugh? Councillor Menard?
Yes.
Councillor Luloff?
No.
Councillor Brockington?
No.
Councillor Daruz?
Oh.
Councillor Currie?
Yes.
Councillor Lowe?
Yes.
Councillor Kits?
No.
Councillor Tierney?
No.
Councillor Carr?
Yes.
Councillor Leeper?
Oui.
Councillor Kelly?
Yes.
Councillor Plante?
Oui.
Councillor Troster?
Yes.
Councillor Hill?
No.
Councillor Hubley? Mayor Sackliff?
Yes.
15 yeas, 9 nays.
Okay, thank you. So moving to the first councillor Kits' motion regarding the Navin Road Crosstown Bike Way, is that carried? Okay. You're good? Carried? Okay. On the second councillor Kits' motion, is that carried? Okay, so this is the councillor Kits' motion on the prioritization frameworks? Sure. So let's, let's put that one up on the screen so people are clear about it. It's the regarding document four.
Just get that on the screen. One moment.
Okay, everybody good? Is that carried?
Okay.
Okay, just put up your hand if you're dissenting. Councillor Bradley, councillor Devine, councillor Johnson. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. And finally, on the third councillor Kits' motion.
Yeas and nays, please, Mayor.
Okay, we'll vote on that. Go ahead, please.
We'll have that thrown on the screen as well.
Yeah, we'll put it on the screen as well.
Councillor Duroch?
Yes.
Councillor Brown?
Yes.
Councillor Devine?
No.
Councillor Johnson?
No.
Councillor Dudas?
Yes.
Councillor Bradley?
No.
Councillor Gower?
Yes.
Councillor King?
No.
Councillor Kavanaugh?
No.
Councillor Menard?
No.
Councillor Luloff?
Yes.
Councillor Brockington?
No.
Councillor Daruz?
Yes.
Councillor Currie?
Yes.
Councillor Lowe?
Yes.
Councillor Kits?
Yes.
Councillor Tierney?
Yes.
Councillor Carr?
Yes.
Councillor Leeper?
Yes.
Councillor Kelly?
Yes.
Councillor Plante?
Oui.
Councillor Troster?
Yes.
Councillor Hill?
Yes.
Councillor Hubley? Mayor Sackliff?
Yes.
17 yeas, 7 nays.
Thank you. It's carried. All right. And then on the committee recommendations as amended, is that carried? Okay, thank you, everyone. So let's go back to item 10 on the agenda, which feels like a long time ago now, was the Ottawa Board of Health annual report. And I know councillor Brockington and possibly others might have had questions about that. So if we could ask the folks from Ottawa Public Health to come forward and we can address those questions.
Good afternoon, Quay. Bonjour.
Hello, Dr. Etches. Okay, go ahead, councillor Brockington.
Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon, Dr. Etches. Good to see you on the screen. Just two questions. Thank you to you and your staff for all the great work at Ottawa Public Health, and I appreciated reading the annual report. In the report, you touch upon key accomplishments from your strategic plan, the 2019 to 2022 strategic plan. And one of the areas of focus, and rightly so at that time when this was created, was the promotion of mental health. We saw the importance of resources for mental health really come on the front, front burner during COVID. Certainly, Ottawa Public Health recognized this as a significant issue in our community and across our province. And I just wanted to ask you, sort of in the later parts of COVID, particularly focusing on 2022, which is about your annual report, how O P H pivoted to direct more resources to O P H? If you could talk about who you're working with in the community since you can't address every challenge with respect to mental health? And going forward, this issue is not going away. It's, it's probably an even greater problem now than it was before COVID started. If you could talk about O P H's focus on mental health, I would appreciate that.
Well, thank you through you, Mayor, and thank you for the question, councillor. You're absolutely right that I fully expect our next strategy, which will be approved by the Board of Health, will recommend that it continue to focus on mental health and substance use, both the public health role of trying to keep people well and helping people with the information they need to know where to turn if they need more support. Sorry, there is some construction just over here outside the window at City Hall, if there's background noise. And what, what we were working on in 2022 were a few things. One of the public health roles is to measure health, so to understand what is happening with the mental health and substance use health of our city. And so that work has come to fruition in a dashboard that's been launched, you know, thinking of that idea of the COVID dashboard. We've, we've just launched this to take a look at, do people have what they need to have mental health in our city? How are they doing? And it's going to further develop this year into understanding, are people able to access what they need? What are the waiting times? What are the outcomes? So that work, it's with many partners who have different pieces of the data. We also worked in our neighborhood hubs. So where we understand there are populations with greater disadvantage of lots of systemic reasons why, we're making sure in those hubs where we have the appropriate staff who speak the right languages and can connect with people, that they're able to do the linkage, you know, assessment and linkage that people need to, to mental health and, and social supports. And so one of the, the sources of data that's new in our area is from the one call, one click or access M H A two points, like one point of contact for mental health and addiction services for adults and for children. What we're seeing there is people are coming forward with social service needs as well as mental health needs. They're concurrent. And so we're, that's why we're partnering in these neighborhood hubs as well with social service staff. Much of what Ottawa Public Health was doing in 2022 and will keep going in this direction is really building the capacity of intermediaries, other city staff, other people who connect with, with community members across Ottawa, priority populations, to faith leaders, for example, working with the Black Mental Health Coalition to help others understand, you know, what are the red flags, when, when to be concerned, and then how to link someone to support. So this work will continue. Another partner that's very important is Ontario Health because they actually fund the treatment services that many people are looking for. The Board of Health took some positions to write to Ontario Health, to describe what we're seeing in the community needs are, to ask them to continue to support priorities. So that work with Ontario Health is, again, something that we see we need to be strategic about how we help inform them and, 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 and we know there, there has been some new funding for mental health in the latest provincial budget. So we look forward to seeing how that can make a difference. I think this gives you a flavor of some of the work. I mean, we have other major areas of focus like suicide prevention and some actual harm reduction services in place. But we, we know the biggest impact can really come by trying to use the information we have to make sure that others are doing their part so that when people present, for example, in the emergency room with an opioid overdose or alcohol withdrawal, that they're treated well without the stigma, compassionately connected to support. So that just for the system level pieces that we need to keep working on. The last, you know, priority population we saw was certainly families with young children and children and youth and trying to intervene early to prevent challenges around mental health. So we do that directly with some families with our nurses and home visitors, supporting people in homes where the most support is needed, and then working with schools. So our, our school team was sharing resources about where to turn for help, and we're looking to really bolster that in the coming year around online resources that any parent and family could draw on. Not always needed treatment. Sometimes you just need some tips and supports and ideas. And so we're looking at for the youth, more of a peer-to-peer approach as well. There's so many things underway. So I'll just see, hopefully that gives you a sense.
Yes, thank you very much for that, those details. And I'm comforted, comforted by your comments that the next strategic plan that your board will address may include a continuance on mental health matters. So I'm, I'm, I'm pleased to hear that. I just wanted to say that I'm sure similar to all of my colleagues, when I'm out in the community and I meet with community groups, I speak with principals, I'm struck by the number of comments about children and youth who are struggling with mental health issues at levels never seen before, all the way up to older adults sitting beside someone from the Pearly Hospital yesterday at a luncheon, and she was saying they had seen significant cognitive and physical deterioration of their residents, particularly during the COVID years. And if there's anything that I can do at A M O, working in partnership with O P H on this matter or any other matter, please, that, that olive branch is always there. But I'm very concerned that families that need professional assistance are confronting a waitlist to get treatment that is, again, timelines that have never been seen before. And it's not a one-off. It's, it's easy for my office staff to provide information to a family who needs help. But the magnitude of this problem in our city and again across the province is there. So I, look, I really appreciate the work O P H is doing in this regard and all the issues that you tackle. But I wanted to raise that because it, it is something that is very shocking to see how many people are impacted by mental health challenges. So thank you, doctor.
Thank you, councillor Brockington. Councillor Kits?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wasn't going to hold the item. I've chewed up a lot of airtime. But since it is held, I have to take the opportunity just to congratulate and thank Ottawa Public Health. We're contemplating their annual report. I think the COVID-19 response cannot be overstated. The MPOX response, the expansion of neighborhood health and wellness hubs, O P H's diversity audit, which is resulting in health equity, diversity and inclusion plan, and, and the many digital solutions that they have explored to improve how public health is delivered. And I think that, you know, it's no secret that it's a valued asset in the city. But I think Ottawa Public Health's incredible work is recognized province-wide. So look forward to working on the next strategic plan. I can assure you that mental health is absolutely a priority, and thank you to staff.
Thank you, councillor Kits, and thank you again for chairing Ottawa Public Health. And thank you, Dr. Etches, to you and your team. Thank you for joining us for the meeting today. So is the Ottawa Public Health 2022 annual report received? All right, let's move to item 18 on the agenda. As everyone knows, there was. As everyone knows, there was some disappointing news in the allocation of the provincial budget towards homelessness prevention in Ottawa. And so staff will be providing a report on this with... Do we need to waive the rules, or was that included in the earlier motion?
Mr. Chair, that was done during the procedural motions.
Okay, so that was covered off in the initial motion at the beginning of the meeting. So with the waiver of rules, we are going to hear the staff report and then open it up to questions from councillors. So go ahead, please. And thank you to staff for preparing this report on a tight timetable.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, council, for the opportunity to speak with you today on the homelessness prevention program and Ottawa's 2023 provincial funding allocation under that program. I would like to begin first by acknowledging that the provincial government is a significant partner to us in investing in solutions and interventions to end homelessness, to build supportive housing, and for other community and very important outreach support services. This funding is the foundation for municipalities across Ontario to provide affordable housing and housing support services for people at risk of or experiencing homelessness. The staff report and this presentation are being brought forward to you today in advance of approving a funding plan or strategy for this allocation and to set the context for future related reports to committee and council. Thank you, Mayor Sutcliffe, and to your staff for your advocacy support to date. Thank you to our community partners who work tirelessly every single day to address what we think and know is a community crisis. And thank you to our staff in community and social services. And I have Paula Veen here at the table as well, who is a Director of Housing Services. And I do thank you for the recognition, Mr. Mayor. They pulled this together very quickly. The presentation provides background on the homelessness prevention program funding allocation and implications of that funding allocation. Next slide, please. In March of 2022, the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing merged three funding programs into one single, more flexible program called the Homelessness Prevention Program. At that time, the province confirmed their commitment to increasing affordable housing and reducing homelessness through an investment of almost $1.1 billion. Provincial funding contributes to 2/3 of our homelessness funding portfolio and provides critical investments to respond to community needs. Next slide, please. By way of background, the HPP program supports Ontario's 47 municipalities with the objective to support service managers in preventing, addressing, and reducing homelessness, including chronic homelessness. The program is intended to be flexible, as I said, and so that service managers can target funding where it's most needed, make the most impact on reducing and preventing homelessness. And the eligible categories of funding under this program are community outreach, emergency shelter solutions, housing assistance, supportive housing capital, and emergency shelter capital. As a benchmark, the City of Ottawa's 2022-2023 initial HPP allocation was $47,619,500. This was an increase in funding for homelessness prevention programs of over $1.5 million from the previous year. Next slide. As part of the provincial budget in March, the province announced a $202 million increase in housing and homelessness investments, of which $190.5 million is allocated to the HPP program and the remainder to the Indigenous Supportive Housing Program. Since then, we have learned that Ottawa will receive an increase of $845,100 for each year of three years to 2026, which amounts to 0.4% of the total $2.2 million provincial investment increase. This while, other larger municipalities will receive substantial increases, like that of the City of Toronto, that has confirmed that they will receive $48 million in an increase. Not receiving what we would call a fair and proportionate funding increase will result in a funding gap in 2024 of approximately $17 million just to maintain current services. And to break down that gap, it really consists of four key elements. Funding for physical distancing centers at $10 million. And this, of course, is a compassionate and reasonable response to the need for additional shelter services in Ottawa that was established during COVID. Supportive housing, including the cost for operating 95 new supportive housing builds that are under development and opening soon, and that's $3 million. Service contracts with community providers previously funded through COVID-19 funding and for services such as enhanced street outreach services, community respite workers, mental health outreach workers, homelessness prevention, et cetera. And then finally, the homelessness program service contracts at $1.9 million includes extraordinary and emergency costs related to transitional and housing search supports for newcomers, including Ukrainian settlement supports, cost of living adjustments, and cost of living adjustments for the homeless prevention program contracts. Next slide. So this slide reflects the mayor's ask to the province, recently reflected in the letter sent to Premier Ford. Our communications back to the province following the funding allocation announcement have been to ask for clarity on the allocation decision, how it was made, and to request a review. The city is looking for proportionate investment from the province, which would be an allocation of $18 to $20 million, at the very least to cover operational costs to sustain existing services, which we would believe would be the same level of consideration provided to that of the City of Toronto. Next slide. To put Ottawa's allocation into perspective, I think this slide demonstrates clearly that Ottawa's portion is very small. That's, I think, an understatement for today. Ottawa's $845,100 increase, as I mentioned, represents 0.4% of the total provincial allocation and an approximate 1.8 increase to our base budget. In comparison, Toronto's population is three times that of Ottawa, and their allocation is $48 million, which is almost 60 times the allocation increase for Ottawa. In addition, many other municipalities received significant increases, including for some, a doubling in their base budget, such as St. Marie, Manitoulin Sudbury, Anipasing. And just yesterday, we heard from London Middlesex, who received a 63% increase to their base budget in this. Next slide. For further comparison and additional context, here is a visual of the various municipalities and their populations. So when compared to the populations of other municipalities and regions in Ontario, it is clear that Toronto and Peel received proportionate increases reflecting the needs in their communities. Ottawa is the second-largest city by population in Ontario. It is geographically larger than Calgary, Edmonton, Toronto, Montreal, and Vancouver combined. Ottawa's housing and homelessness system faces enormous challenges and pressures, including higher needs necessitating a coordinated, layered approach for solutions related to supportive and transitional housing. These pressures led to city council's decision in January of 2020 to declare a housing and homelessness crisis in Ottawa. We have reported those challenges to the province and staff over the past years, and previous councils have advocated for funding increases that are in proportion to our local needs. Next slide. In terms of pressures locally, the number of individuals accessing shelters for the first time continues to trend upwards, with over a quarter of those accessing shelters in 2022 doing so for that first time. Ottawa's local shelters are operating over capacity, with our family shelter system operating at 366% overcapacity. And this, of course, has necessitated the use of hotels, motels, and in the summer, post-secondary residences for placements. In addition, Immigration, Refugee, and Citizenship Canada has transferred over 702 individuals to Ottawa since June of 2022, further straining our overall housing support system. Furthermore, the city's ongoing need for physical distancing centers and the ending of the provincial social services relief funding and federal COVID-related funding has created enormous budget pressure. And we know that in our physical distancing centers, we have, at any one time, up to 115 individuals accessing those centers. And lastly, shelter providers are reporting staffing challenges and reporting clients with higher acuity needs than ever, further challenging their ability to provide services. Next slide. The proposed funding level, as announced by the province, will compromise our commitment to build between 570 and 850 new supportive housing units each year, as outlined in our 10-year Housing and Homelessness Plan. That was approved by council, of course, and by the province. And that's an important program. It is one way of moving people out of chronic homelessness into housing. Since 2006, 650 units of supportive housing were created, and at present, 230 units are under development and most are expected to become operational over the next 18 months. The estimated annual operating funding required for those units is $6 million. Of these units, 180 units cannot be stopped. They're fully into construction, but a remaining 54 are at risk. And we will not be able to support future projects without an increase in operating funding. The absence of adequate funding from the province will magnify these pressures on our shelter system. Our ability to operate physical distancing centers is also at risk. As mentioned, up to 80, 150 residents of Ottawa use those services each night. So, next slide. So finally, the actions that we will continue to take and next steps will continue to advocate for Ottawa to receive its fair share of funding and proportionate to our local needs. As mentioned, $18 to $20 million would be on par with what proportionately Toronto is set to receive. A detailed homelessness prevention plan, investment plan will be presented at Community Services Committee on May 23rd and to City Council on May 24th for approval. Our hope is that we would see a reconsideration of Ottawa's allocation amount before that committee meeting. Staff are committed to implement council's direction and commitment to end chronic homelessness and to invest in more intensive supportive housing solutions. We will not stop in that goal. Staff will also continue to work with the province and federal funding partners and work with our very dedicated community partners to achieve these goals. So thank you for your time, and that concludes our presentation.
Thank you for that excellent presentation. And just before I open it up to councillors, if you could just speak to the... I read in the media that the ministry's response has been that Ottawa was disproportionately funded in the past, that this reflects on some level that somehow presumably we uniquely were receiving too much money in the past. So this is a recalibration to bring us back in line with what other municipalities are funding. Could you just speak to that, please?
Yes, I can start, and then perhaps Paul can add some more detail. There was an auditor's report approximately two years ago that looked at how this funding was distributed across municipalities across Ontario. And yes, the province has said that their goal is to re-proportion the funding in a more equitable way. What we've asked is to see how the funding was allocated to Toronto. When we look at Toronto's portion, it does not appear to be a consistent application of the auditor generals' recommendations. We've asked repeatedly to see how our allocation was determined, and that has not come to bear either. So it's difficult to speculate with certainty how the allocations were determined. However, with regard to the scale and scope of need in Ottawa with our population, we would comfortably say that the proportion of funding that we received is not realistic or relative to that of Toronto.
So just to amplify that a little bit, if you don't mind, if the intent had been to allocate more funding to rural communities and smaller communities, then you would have expected to see Toronto's number proportionate to our number. But that doesn't seem to line up with the answer they're giving, since Toronto's number is 60 times what our number is. Is that fair to say?
That would be fair to say, Mr. Mayor. And I'll ask Paul to provide just a couple of more details on how the audit report has influenced these decisions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Ottawa was one of the four service managers that participated in this provincial audit in 2021. So we are acutely aware of the details and the process and the depth of this audit that occurred. And yes, Ottawa, Toronto, and Canora. Canora was actually the highest-funded area per capita, followed by Toronto, followed by Ottawa. And there was also some modeling done by the auditors that looked at if they were to redistribute the current funding allocations that certain cities, including Ottawa, Toronto, Hamilton... There was about a list of 10 cities that would have seen a substantial decrease in their funding based on the auditor's preferred model. Now, the province committed during that audit report to review the funding model and work with service managers on an appropriate service model, consult with us and the sector partners to come up with a model. And to our knowledge, there's been no consultation, so it's difficult to ascertain precisely what the model is. We know the categories, we know the data source, but we don't know how there's such a disproportionate amount between Ottawa and Toronto and other cities like Hamilton, for example, that was also earmarked as overfunded.
And last question, and then I'll turn it over to my colleagues. But so you're saying that if the... Because the government and the ministry are citing the auditor general's report. You're saying the numbers that we just put up on the screen here are not consistent with what was in the auditor general's report. Otherwise, the proportionate difference between Ottawa and Toronto would not be what it is. Is that accurate?
Well, the auditor proposed how they would have redistributed the current funding. But what they tasked the province to do is that you need to come up with a different model in the future, and you need to do that in collaboration with your service managers. So in the absence of such process, we're unable to ascertain how this new model aligns with the recommendations of the auditors.
Right, but the conclusion of the auditor general was that Toronto and Ottawa were in the same boat, effectively, right?
Effectively.
So therefore, if this allocation in the 2023 provincial budget was reflective of the auditor general's report, then our share and Toronto's share would both have been lower, not Toronto's share being high and ours being low.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Trauster?
Thank you very much, Mayor, and thank you to city staff. Homelessness is an absolute crisis in downtown Ottawa. And city staff has been working diligently with my staff to try to help in some crisis situations in the last couple of weeks. So I sincerely appreciate that. I have a number of questions. You keep referring to the gap in funding being for 2024. I just wanted to know if there are any impacts this year.
This year, there is a funding gap of about $3.3 million, which we are able to cover with one-time federal funding that's not available to us in 2024.
Okay. And just another question. So you identified in the report the total gap is $37 million. We're asking the province to pony up $20 million, which we feel is our fair share. Where do you anticipate the other $17 million coming from that you've identified as a gap?
So the $37 million gap has the $17 million So the, the thirty seven million gap has the seventeen million that is the operational funding. Twenty million is reflective of what we believe we will need to provide a strategy to move out of um our physical distancing centers to acquire capital to be able to do that. In order to use capital funding that is earmarked for two thousand and twenty four will have to affect our budget. And so our plan, and we have been working with financial services, is to bring back various scenarios to council as part of the Housing Long Range Financial Plan Review, which will be brought to you prior to deliberation for the two thousand and twenty four council uh budget.
Okay, so I'm correct in assuming that if the province does not answer our request, then if we want to transition away from physical distancing centers and community centers, which is something that we pass as a priority, that is something we will have to fund through tax dollars.
It's a potential scenario and we'll be bringing that plan to committee at the end of May.
Okay. You also identified fifty four supportive housing homes that could be directly at risk. Could you tell us where those homes are or what project that refers to?
Those, those units are uh part of the Rapid Housing Initiative, uh, third round of the Rapid Housing Initiative that uh, that was discussed at council recently and was the subject of a motion council to, for us to directing staff to work with our community partners to um prioritize supportive housing to move people from shelters into, into housing with supports. Uh, we've, we've done that. And um, but the agreements are not signed. And um, so that would put those, those projects, um, you know, should, should it be the decision of council that uh we would not be able to uh to proceed. So um, it is difficult.
No, absolutely. And I think every one of us around the table understands how absolutely brutal it is, a, a decision it is to say, does this community get recreation services? Or do we use this as a shelter for people who are experiencing homelessness and we shouldn't have to make that choice? And so I'm just saying to my colleagues around the table, if the province doesn't come to the table with the money we're asking for, we're gonna have to see, have a serious conversation about budget two thousand and twenty four and what we can afford as a city. And I would posit that we can't afford to allow homelessness to continue at a moral and an economic level. It's hard to even convey the depth of need in the ward that I represent. We have people living in tents and in stairways. We have shelters that are overflowing, rooming houses with absolutely horrendous conditions with no safe housing to send people to. So when bile needs to go in because, because some of these buildings are unfit for human habitation, it means that we're immediately making those residents homeless and have absolutely no place to send them. Um, and the outcry to, about the need to end chronic, chronic homelessness, increase our frontline services is coming from absolutely everyone I speak to, business owners, BIAs, and I just want to emphasis, and Mayor, I know you know this, but the critical health of our downtown is at risk. We cannot revitalize and innovate and attract tourism when we continue to treat human beings with such abject disregard for their dignity. Um, and again, I know the city is doing everything it can, but we uh need the province to fund this properly and we also need to have a conversation about priorities. Um, social housing providers are burdened to the absolute limits of their capacity. Um, we can't afford the loss of fifty four units of supportive housing. We just absolutely cannot. Um, and any, any miss, it's a, just a deferral of responsibility out to frontline workers and organizations. They're starting to push back and they're starting to say, we can't take on more without more operational funding. And so the province is coming to us with empty hands, um, a four billion dollar unallocated surplus and they're telling the city that basically our residents can die in the streets rather than give us the funding from tax dollars to ensure that people are not suffering in this way anymore. Um, so I, I know I'm incredibly frustrated to see Ottawa seen as an afterthought by this provincial government again. And uh, you know, I know the neighbors in my ward felt abandoned during the convoy. Um, and now even after the mayor has engaged in the spirit of good faith, they're abandoning us again. So if members of the four government are listening to this meeting, I implore you to give Ottawa our fair share so we can begin to address our housing and homelessness emergency. We declared this an emergency in two thousand and twenty. It's, it's gotten so much worse. And to council colleagues, this should serve as a warning that of other levels of government are not necessarily going to bail us out when there's holes in our budget and we need a tax rate that meets the scale of the urgent needs in our community because ending chronic homelessness, it's both a moral and an economic imperative. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councillor Trossard. Councillor Kavanaugh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and uh thank you for the initiative of uh writing this letter. Um, of course, we're very concerned about it and I want to thank staff as well, um, recognizing the importance of the homelessness program. And I also want to thank our partners at the Alliance to End Homelessness who have really been on the ground and really understand what's going on out there as well. As Chair of Ottawa Community Housing, I understand the importance of deep affordable housing and how badly it's needed. We're housing currently thirty two thousand residents. That's in fifteen thousand units. But there's twelve thousand on the waiting list. It's, it's more than we can possibly handle right now. We also have shelters that are overflowing. We know that and we're not even counting the ones where um it's on intimate partner violence, where people are fleeing from their homes. This is absolutely essential. And I want to know which projects are in jeopardy because I'm, I'm concerned because um Ottawa community housing is not just housing people currently. They're building new affordable housing and I'm very worried about the potential of not having that funding uh as well as our other partners of nonprofit housing. So uh I'd like to hear some of the prob- you know, what, what's at risk here?
Thank you for that question through you, Mr. Mayor. Given the, this announcement, our staff are working very diligently to analyze the impact. We provided what we believe is a picture of what the potential impacts will be. We are taking that back. We are analyzing it and we'll be um assessing how we move forward in two thousand and twenty two and we'll be bringing that information back to council as part of the Housing Long Range Financial Plan, as part of the Housing Capital Plan and as part of the Housing Transitional Plan. Um, so difficult to speculate at this moment. We haven't done the full analysis yet.
I appreciate it because it is a hard blow and there are, I can say that uh projects are in the pipeline and they're desperately needed very much. And this is part of our ten year plan and it won't be possible to achieve without, without this funding. Uh, we need partners at all levels. We need our federal partners as well. We need our provincial partners um to, to get homelessness solved. So I want to thank you for your work and um I'll be fully supporting this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Kavanaugh. Councillor Carr?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Uh, and thank you for uh writing the letter and thank you to staff for presenting this. I will say that uh since I started at uh my term, this is probably the most terrifying and upsetting thing that I've heard. Uh, I think most people around the table here are aware that in my ward, two of my three community centers are currently housing over a hundred people who uh are housed in these physical distancing centers and they've been taking advantage, the city of the, of the social services relief fund. So what I'm hearing today is that funding has ceased. I'm hearing because we did not receive adequate funding for supportive housing beds, that that uh funding, we, we, we have a shortfall and we're not able to service more people. I've had the opportunity to be, to, to visit these centers and what I can tell you is that these centers have essentially been delivering supportive housing in a community facilities, yes, at the expense of youth, at the expense of, of seniors, at the expense of other vulnerable people, but the city made that decision to help. You know, they had to make a, a decision about, you know, who is the most vulnerable? What, what a terrible position to be in. So what I want to know is, you know, when I brought this to the table to talk about the need, um, just, you know, six weeks ago, we talked about the need to purchase facilities uh to provide capital funding through the, the RHI funding to be able to house these people. A lot of my fellow councillors around the table didn't know that this was happening in my community and that I was housing these folks. It, my local MPP is the leader of the Liberal Party and has yet to make a statement of them. Perhaps he doesn't know. So I would like to first ask staff, is the province aware that we have close to, you know, a hundred and fifty people who require supportive housing beds? Are they aware that of the twelve thousand people on our social housing registry list, some of them do, do get placed in at home because homelessness is a priority, probably aren't ready to take that unit on and are therefore lapsing that unit because they're, they are unable to support without supportive housing? Like, i- is the province aware of this? This just seems to be too glaring of an error for them not to be aware.
Thank you for that question through you, Mr. Mayor. From a staff position, we provide updates to the province regularly with regard to the funding we receive, how it's applied. Every time we provide an update to the province, we must provide demographics and statistics and a good picture of need in our community. From a staffing, from a staff perspective, we believe that we've provided an accurate picture to the ministry of the local need.
Thank you for that. And I'll just ask a follow up question. Uh, well, my first follow up question. So staff are aware, when I look at how the funding has been allocated, yes, there's a glaring quest, question about Ottawa and Toronto. When you say that Canora has been um receiving the most, I mean, I'm gonna assume that's because they receive a lot of folks from indigenous communities that come into that community. Here in Ottawa, we receive thousands and thousands of people who are new Canadians that live in our hotels and motels. Um, you know, we've got, I think thirty five service agreements to, to help support this growing population. We don't put people on the street. Many of these folks actually require the use of supportive housing. Have you been working with IRCC to, to help with supports with this? And is the province aware of this fact when have, uh, you know, when you've been discussing the, the allocation formula?
Thank you for that question through you, Mr. Mayor. I'll ask Paul to speak to the work we're doing with the IRCC.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And yes, we, we have been working closely with uh, with IRCC to um, to mitigate the issues, the impact on, on our system. Um, we have another meeting coming up. I've requested another, another meeting to uh work out again some of the issues. Uh, it's very complex. It's, it's uh not easy to solve, but we are, the, the communication lines are open and we are negotiating and uh we are trying to work together to uh, to get the best outcome. So absolutely with our IRCC, we continue to have ongoing dialogues and try to resolve the issues as they emerge.
Okay, and my, probably my last question is, you know, we, you mentioned we've got about a hundred and fifty people in the PDCs presently, but I'm aware over the course of the past three years, you've actually managed to house two hundred of those folks that were originally assigned to PDCs. The, the tide has not stopped. We continue to have more and more people that qualify for supportive housing for a number of reasons, whether it's, you know, addictions, mental health, whatever, the economy, whatever's prevented people from being able to cope without those supports. And, and so I guess when I see this presentation and I hear that the Social Services Relief Fund that was provided in COVID that allowed us to have this model where the city was effectively delivering supportive housing in our, in our community centers um is, is ceasing and we're essentially cutting the funding, what is going to happen to these people in the community centers? I understand we're bringing back reports and we're, we're gonna think of options, but ultimately, and, and perhaps this isn't a question for staff, but this is a question of council. We can write letters all we want, but I think we need to discuss what we're gonna do about this situation. And, and I'd like everyone to think about what action they're gonna take because this is really, really a crisis in our community. So I don't need staff to answer that question. I'm, I'm asking everyone around the table to reflect about what they can do. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Carr. Councillor Leaper?
Thank you very much. Uh, so I do want to come back to the development that Mayor Sutcliffe mentioned, which was the minister has provided a response or a statement to the city. Um, and I, I just want to read it. Uh, a couple of sentences. As has been explained to Mayor Sutcliffe and City of Ottawa officials on multiple occasions over the last several weeks, homelessness prevention program funding is based on an updated formula that applies to every municipal service manager in the province. The updated model is based on a community share of homelessness, supportive housing units, low income households, households in deep core housing need as defined by the CMHC and indigenous and youth populations. So the minister says this has been explained to us several times. Do we have that math? Can we reverse engineer this response to say, this is how much Ottawa should get, this is how much Toronto should get, this is how much Kingston should get?
Thank you and through you, Mr. Mayor. In effect, our response through Mayor Sutcliffe's letter is just that, reflecting on the proportion of funding increase allocated to Toronto and then looking at Ottawa's population and need and applying the same proportion to Ottawa should see us receiving well above twenty million dollars.
But there's no public reckoning of that math.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, we have asked repeatedly to see the actual math, as you say, the actual numbers, and they have not provided it. We've asked to see numbers or how they've applied the formula to, for instance, Toronto's allocation, Hamilton's allocation, Peel's allocation. All, all communities in Ontario are in need. We're not suggesting that they should not have allocated more equitably, but we're suggesting if, if there was a special consideration provided to Toronto, which we believe there was, then we would expect the same consideration applied to Toronto, given the level of population and housing and homelessness crisis in our city and the scale and scope of need.
On every one of these metrics mentioned in the minister's response, should we expect that Toronto and Ottawa are, are close to being analogues in terms of, of funding need?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, it would be diff- difficult to do that on the fly. We'd have to um look at, we'd have to know more about how, what exactly was involved in the funding formula, to be honest.
Yeah. I mean, is there a risk that we will have to close physical distancing centers and that more individuals will be forced to sleep rough?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Our plan and our goal is to ensure that everyone has somewhere to sleep each night. We are gonna take this all back and look at what we can bring forward to committee and council that will enable us to move our budget around if necessary, but to continue with the plan forward to ensure that we can support the overflow shelter needs in our community. We can't be specific at this moment because we haven't done the full analysis of the impact of this. Our hope is that there will be a view, a review of the allocation and we can bring a, a fresh spending formula for approval at committee at the end of May.
Yes, and are, are the numbers of people who require supportive housing on the rise in Ottawa?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we are seeing uh an increase in uh, in uh number of people accessing shelters, becoming, becoming homeless as well as uh, as an increase again in chronic homelessness as we pivot to a post pandemic era. So we are seeing the numbers climbing up to uh pre-COVID twenty nineteen being the highest numbers that we had on record. So we are heading in that direction. The plan, the transition plan that we will bring to you in May will also have those data analysis in there and the, and our staff are working on projections not just over the coming year, but over, over the next few years, what we can anticipate uh as the growth. As you know, a city, the city of Ottawa has grown, continues to grow, but our shelter system has not. So it's at overcapacity.
We're overcapacity now. We won't have the funding available to help us run, to keep up with the capacity we have now without some shifting around, as you say. We don't have enough money moving forward to build new supportive housing as a result of this funding decision.
We don't have money to operate either for uh supportive.
And to operate, exactly.
When you have the capital, doesn't, you have to have the operating and that's, that's that's not there.
It is, it is a frightening situation. It's one that I think leaves Ottawa at a real risk of an increased number of encampments, an increased number of people who are living in extremely vulnerable circumstances. Uh, it is incumbent on Minister Carr to show us the math. This statement that he has made to the city, his response back to the mayor, does not pass the BS detector. We need to see the math and if the math is not fair, if the math is not equitable, then the minister needs to revisit this decision and to ensure that he is bringing the funding into Ottawa. We need in order to help our most vulnerable populations. This is um, uh, This is, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for bringing this forward as an item today. It is a frightening situation. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Leaper.
Oui, merci beaucoup. Merci aussi pour la présentation. I just want to make a couple of clarifying.
Thank you very much and thanks for the presentation.
You councillor Leaper. So you said in your second slide that emergency, you use the phrase emergency shelter solutions. And I just want to clarify, the number one reason in any city, not just ours, that people say they encamp and they're involved in encampments or they live in encampments is because they don't want to go to emergency shelters. They're scared of what happens there. There's something that has happened to them in the past. The reason we have to push for supportive housing is because emergency shelters are not at all a solution. I also want to clarify too, you referred to the shelters in rec centers. We are the only municipality that uses recreational facilities and uses them in poor areas where there's a lot of low-income residents. Other municipalities use things like residences, empty schools, convention centers, hotels. Again, I don't like the idea of putting poor people against poor people. I think it's quite incumbent upon us to find other solutions. And I will also ask, I guess, my one question here. Does this mean that Bernard Grand Maitre will not close in August, the news that you're providing for us today? I have another, sorry, I have another point and then you can answer. You also mentioned the higher acuity clients, but I just, my understanding is, in speaking of shepherds of good hope, is that they are to take the higher acuity clients and then the shelters that are in recreational centers provide lower acuity clients. So I just wanted to make that distinction that there is an ask of our shelter providers, our third-party providers, that they do take the higher acuity clients. At least that's what was communicated to me. But if you could also answer my question about Bernard Grand Maitre, I would appreciate it. Merci.
Merci pour la question. Through you, Mr. Mayor.
And thank you for the question.
Bringing the plan together to committee at the end of May. So it's too early to answer that first question about Bernard Grand Maitre. The second question about acuity, the shelter system, the shelter providers work as a system. And across the system, the people are, the shelter providers are telling us that they're experiencing people walking through their doors who have more and more complex and intertwined needs. And that's a reality of shelter systems across Ontario.
Sorry, but you do agree that the number one reason people choose encampments is because they don't want to go to emergency shelters, correct?
I just want to make sure we're staying on topic here, councillor Leaper, just because I want to stick to the issue of funding rather than the, I think this is more a question that would be appropriate for committee.
Well, it's just to highlight the importance of supportive housing.
Okay, now see councillor Dudas.
There is no way to sugarcoat this. This is absolutely devastating. You know, I wish this could just be chalked up to an accounting error on the part of the provincial government. But sadly, this is not the first instance in which this province has shortchanged Ottawa in comparison to other municipalities. You know, and there's no denying that the ones that are going to suffer from this the most are those in our community who need our help the most. The unhoused, those who are in our shelters, those who are in dire need of continued sustainable support. This provincial funding, I'm going to say, oversight must be rectified immediately. This is going to leave Ottawa with an operating gap in the millions just to maintain the status quo. And we all know that the status quo hasn't been enough to date. We all want to do more. Our residents are asking us to do more for those in our community who are chronically homeless. And now we're talking about cutting even those essential services to them to provide them with shelter access, to provide them with the supports they need. The only alternative that I can see as a result of this, if the province doesn't come to the table with just even a fair amount to cover this gap, is for us to either turn to our taxpayers or to not provide the services to the people who need it the most. Or to find some unique maneuvering of our funds, which in the long, in the long run, still means that it comes out of our tax dollars. What we want to use our tax dollars for, what we want to use our reserves for our funding for is to end chronic homelessness. It's not to cover a gap that the province has just created. You know, and if I was going to play into maybe the provincial mindset, and I'm just surmising here, maybe it's all about the money, right? If I was going to play into that, studies have shown time and again that the cost of homelessness has a ripple effect on so many aspects of our society. The financial toll on our healthcare system is just one example. So providing housing and supports reduces the cost in the long run, including costs to provincial services. As the Chair of Community Services, I want to thank the mayor for his advocacy on this matter and for asking for what is fair. That's all that our city is asking for. The alternative to not receiving this essential funding is terrifying.
Sorry. Thank you councillor Dudas. Councillor Divine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And to echo one of my colleagues, thank you for getting this on the agenda so that we can talk about it today. To those of our residents who are impacted by this funding allocation and the numbers of those residents, as we know, is growing, this is as existential a threat as it gets. And to a certain extent, I think we have to jump full-on into negotiating strategy, as councillor Leaper said earlier, because either we're going to win with this request that you were submitting, and that's fantastic, or we're not. And we're going to kind of have to come up with a really different way of finding the funds necessary to address that problem. And on the issue of negotiating strategy, what I'm most interested in is that we have to pursue a relentless questioning to the province of why Ottawa is being seen in a way that is completely different than the way Toronto is being measured, because I do believe they are analogous. The only two cities in the province with a million or over, that in and of itself should be a classification. And no matter how you spin the math, this cannot be an accounting error that led to forty-seven million to one and eight hundred and forty-some thousand to the other. There is no way that that math adds up. I think, and I edited my word, it was going to be a forceful questioning of show us the math. I can settle with relentless questioning of show us the math, but we have to see that because we have to understand how they got to those numbers. And the reason I ask that, we need that, is I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, that our best strategy will be that we go about the demand in a way that is as fair as possible. And the thing that I am confused about is I can't understand through their math whether or not they got to the Toronto figure of forty-seven million, either from a per capita basis or on the understanding that large cities have greater instances of homelessness and therefore the amount has to be greater. Because if it were, and you're shaking your head, so if it were population-based, their number of forty-seven million is way too high. It would be more like thirty-seven million. Our number of eighteen million would therefore also be way too high. It would be more like thirteen million. And so if the rationale for Toronto's forty-seven million is likely due to larger cities have larger problems, then I don't think it would be hard for us to, if we had that formula, to make an application for Ottawa and come at a number far higher. So I just hope that as a council, and I know that we've been playing gentle with the province and we've had to because of all of our entreaties with them. But if we don't pursue this question and this demand relentlessly, people will we will have abandoned our greatest responsibility to those citizens that are most vulnerable. And this is where we have to hang our shield. So I hope we can soon put some relentless pressure on the province to tell us why we are being seen so differently than Toronto and apply all pressure we can through dialogue with all of our various MPPs, no matter their political stripe and any other tactic we can employ. Thank you, sir.
Thank you councillor Divine. Councillor Kits.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I would say that when you look at the numbers and the discrepancy in funding, it's unbelievable. I think my jaw hit the floor when those pie graphs went up on the screen. But unfortunately, I think it's become unsurprising from this provincial government when it comes to supporting Ottawa specifically. You know, I do want to recognize and applaud the additional two hundred and two million annual investment in the homelessness prevention program and the indigenous supportive housing program. That is an important investment in this province. But giving the second-largest city in Ontario a mere sliver of that funding is heartbreaking, really. And you can hear the emotion from my colleagues where this acute need is more visible. And, you know, I could still get emotional about the lack of response and of acknowledgement from the province for what my communities went through in the aftermath of the Dredge Show and continue to deal with. So I think it's clear that the premier and his advisors are not viewing Ottawa as a political priority. And so I'm going to appeal today to conservative voters in this city, of which there are many, or potential conservative voters. You need to reach out directly to the premier and to our conservative MPPs. They need to hear from you that Ottawa is worthy of investment. Because I'm not sure that anything we say in this room will change their minds or any of the letters that we send from it. They need to hear from their supporters because it's funding for homelessness today. It was the Dredge Show yesterday. It could be infrastructure projects or public health tomorrow. So the relationship needs to change. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Kits. Councillor Brockington.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you colleagues for excellent comments. I do believe that at the end of the day, we have an obligation, if provincial money does not come in, to ensure that the most vulnerable in our community are provided for and that this will be reflected in future budgets. And I highly suggest, Mayor, that you go down to Queen's Park with the interim city manager and have a discussion behind closed doors with the premier and or minister to talk this. They loathe the public debate and discussion about these matters, but the fact is, we have a very strong case here. The fact that we have no one in government who champions the city of Ottawa provincially is a big concern for me. There's no one in cabinet that has the ear of the minister or the premier is also a significant concern. And I certainly appreciate the letter, Mayor, that you sent, but really, we have to send a delegation down to Queen's Park to articulate this matter and try and get the matter resolved at the very least.
So just to be clear councillor Brockington on that point, we were there last week. Okay, so yeah, we were in the premier's office last week on this and a few other issues, but this was at the top of our list.
Thank you. Thank you for that. At the very least, as councillor Leaper indicated, a very clear explanation as to how Ottawa's allotment was determined. I think it's a very basic and fair question to be answered in full. But at the end of the day, Ottawa has presented a very clear case about what our needs are. And someone keeps saying, we deserve our fair share. That's the minimum ask. We deserve to have our needs met. Fair share is one thing. Per capita allotment is one thing. But we have identified housing and homelessness emergency in the city and even the province, their term of office, they've certainly made it clear that housing at least is a priority for them, not as passionate it seems about the homelessness side of that equation. But thanks, Mr. Mayor, for your efforts and for the dialogue this morning. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Brockington. Just before we wrap up on this, I just wanted to ask staff, and I'm not sure if this is a question for community services or for finance, but several councillors have raised the budget implications of this and the the need for us to supplement whatever we're not getting from the provincial government. But I guess I would just ask how sustainable is that? Because as, you know, I don't know that, you know, obviously, we can do more and we can put more into this. But my understanding is the reality of how our municipalities are structured in Ontario is that we cannot fund these programs without provincial support. These kinds of programs require appropriate provincial investment to be sustainable in the long run. Is that fair to say?
Mr. Mayor, that is correct. That's fully accurate what you just stated. I can elaborate if you like. Yeah, yeah. So I mean, obviously, this is a significant gap, right? We don't have the reserves or we don't have the stable funding in our base to kind of fill this gap. So it is definitely not sustainable going forward. I'm working closely with Claire and her team and my team, trying to devise that, you know, what is the bridge gap for this year, right? And then what does that revised plan look like? And I agree, like, when I saw this number and this allocation, there's no math equation in my wheelset or my toolkit that I can kind of equate to that. So it's a big issue that we're working closely with to kind of, you know, bring forward risk mitigation strategies, but certainly not a financial sustainable strategy that I'm aware of to fill this gap going forward.
Yeah, and I guess just to further that point, you know, we were already dealing with, and I think the city of Toronto has articulated this as well, we were already dealing with a shortfall in funding from other levels of government to support the work that we do in a number of different areas, including social services and transit and other areas. So this is just adding to that number. And, you know, the idea that we would take on more of the responsibility locally and be funding that through property taxes when we were already funding things through property taxes that we should not be funding through property taxes and should be the the contributions of other levels of government, particularly the provincial government. You know, I think it would be dangerous for us to be going down that road of of increasing the inequity in terms of what we're getting.
Mr. Mayor, one hundred percent agree. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Councillor Menard.
Thanks, Mayor. Just very briefly, if I could just suggest a strategy for councillors around the table that might be feeling like we don't have a lot to do here. I think the biggest thing is let's contact our MPPs, whoever they are in your ward, and let's ask them to put some questions on the order table in question period and for them to reiterate the concern to both bureaucrats in Toronto as well as our political counterparts at the provincial level. So I think I've done that, just sitting around this table. I've sent a message to my team to say, let's make sure our MPP is aware of this and that they're asking questions. I think if all of us can do that here today, that's something we can do to push and help. So I think it'd be a good strategy for us.
Thank you councillor Menard. And I would just add, just on the, you know, the point that I was raising with the finance department, that, you know, I certainly don't want the message out of all of this to the provincial government to be that whenever they do not adequately fund the city of Ottawa, we're going to make up the difference through property taxes. Because that will lead us down a continuous road of the province not contributing its fair share to Ottawa and us having to make up the difference in property taxes. So I don't think that when there are shortfalls like this, we should let them off the hook and bail them out with tax dollars, with local property tax dollars for things that ought to be funded by the province of Ontario. So let's continue to put the pressure on the province to deliver its full fair share of the funding for the areas where it has the responsibility. Okay, again, I want to thank our staff for putting together this presentation on short notice. And I also want to express my gratitude and frankly, my sympathy for the team who are working hard every day. I know, I can't imagine what it must feel like to be responding to the increasing need in our community and always feeling, you know, like it's one step forward, two steps back and that the challenge is increasing at the same time as resources are increasingly under pressure. And I would extend the same message to the amazing people who are working in the social services sector throughout our community who are experiencing the same dynamics. So thank you to all the people who work hard every day at City Hall and throughout the community to serve the most vulnerable in our city and who face ongoing pressures. And this is only adding to that. All right, so is that report from our team received today? Okay, thank you, everyone, and thank you again to the team for presentation. Let's move to item twenty. I believe there are no in-camera items. Item twenty-one is council receiving the list of items approved by its committees under delegated authority. Is that received? Item twenty-two is a motion to adopt reports. Councillor DeRus, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that the report from the Community and Social Services Department, report entitled twenty twenty-three dash twenty-six allocation of provincial homelessness prevention program, funding the report from the Ottawa Board of Health, entitled Public, Ottawa Public Health, twenty twenty-two, and our report, the report. and our report, the report from the selection panel, Police Services Board entitled Appointment to the Police Service Boards, Build Heritage Committee Report 4, Emergency Preparedness and Protective Services Committee Report 3, Environment and Climate Change Committee Report 3, Planning and Housing Committee Report 7, Transit Commission Report 4, Transportation Committee Report 4, and the reports from the City Clerk entitled Sarus Update, Council Inquiries and Motions for the Period Ending April 21, 2023, and Summary of Oral and Written Public Submissions for Items Subject to the Planning Act Explanation Requirements at the City Council Meeting of April 12, 2023 Be Received and Adopted As A Amendment.
Is that carried? Thank you. All right, we have a motion requiring suspension of the rules of procedure, which is related to councillor Tierney's election of the Board of Directors of the Federation of Canadian Municipalities on suspension of the rules. Is that carried?
Good.
Councillor Troster, you're moving the motion.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas the Federation of Canadian Municipalities represents the interests of member municipalities on policy and program matters that fall within federal jurisdiction. Whereas FCM's Board of Directors is comprised of elected municipal officials from all regions and sizes of communities to form a broad base of support and provide FCM with the united voice required to carry the municipal message to the federal government. Whereas FCM's annual general meeting will be held in conjunction with the annual conference and trade show May 25 to 28, 2023, followed by the election of FCM's Board of Directors. Whereas Ottawa City Council supports councillor Tim Tierney on his bid to run for third vice president table officer's position on the FCM board. Be it resolved that the council of the city of Ottawa endorses councillor Tim Tierney to stand for election on FCM's Board of Directors for the period starting in May 2023 and ending in June 2024. And be it further resolved that council assumes all costs associated with councillor Tim Tierney attending FCM's Board of Directors meetings.
Okay, is the motion carried? Who dissent? Okay, Carrie, thank you, everyone. Okay, notices of motion for consideration at a subsequent meeting. Councillor Tierney has a motion. I want to thank councillor Tierney for advancing this motion on my behalf. Go ahead, please.
I think, Mr. Mayor, you have a little passion for running, so this is right near Ballywick. Whereas the Ottawa Race Weekend is scheduled for May 26 to 28, with the Health and Fitness Expo included in the two-day event being held at the Aberdeen Pavilion in Lansdowne Park for the first time. Whereas the Expo is also the site of the race kit pickup and free shuttle bus service operated throughout the day on Friday, May 26 and Saturday, May 27, between City Hall and Lansdowne Park. Whereas Ottawa Race Weekend is covering the cost of the shuttle bus and has requested the city of Ottawa to waive the cost of parking at the City Hall Garage. That's a part of its promotion of their shuttle bus for participants to easily obtain race kits and visit Lansdowne Park. Whereas implementing the free evening and weekend parking at City Hall during the Ottawa Race Weekend would result in an estimated $3,000 of foregone parking revenue and thus reduce contributions to the Parking Reserve Fund. Therefore, be resolved that the city council approved the free parking at City Hall Parking Garage located at 110 Laurier Avenue and will be provided Friday, May 26 at 6:00 p.m. until Sunday, May 28 at 9:00 p.m.
Thank you, councillor Tierney. There's another notice of motion from councillor Lulov.
Bear with me, my friends, I'll read it in now so that I don't have to read it next week. So you're a little bit forward on this one, so I apologize. Whereas the Petrie Island Canoe Club is an incorporated not-for-profit organization that offers canoe and kayak instruction and training programs on Petrie Island Beach at 795 Twaddle Road, named after the illustrious Al Twiddle, accessible to all Ottawa residents. And whereas on April 27, 2022, council declared 280 square meters of Petrie Island Beach as a surplus to the city's needs in order for the PICC to lease the area from the city and develop marine storage facility through funding received from the federal grants known as the Canada Community Revitalization Fund that will allow the PICC to continue to serve diverse groups and demographics and offer programs to paddlers for all ages and abilities. And whereas on April 27, 2022, council delegated authority to the Director Corporate Real Estate Office to negotiate, conclude, execute, and amend on behalf of the city a lease or license agreement with the PICC for a term of up to 25 years. We're halfway done, guys. For 280 square meters of Petrie Island Beach, for a marine storage facility regardless of the underlying value of the land area. And whereas in completing its due diligence through the detailed design submitted through the city's site plan control application process, the PICC has refined its lease area to include an increase of 280 square meters of Petrie Island Beach to accommodate proper access to and maintenance of the marine storage facility. And whereas the ward, councillor and city staff support the proposed increase of the leased area by 280 square meters for the total leased area of 560 square meters of the marine storage facility. Therefore, be it resolved that council declare the further 280 square meters of Petrie Island Beach a surplus to the city's needs. Be it further resolved, the council waived the revenue lease agreements at market rent section of the city's leasing policy requiring the city to lease city-owned real estate at market value for the additional 280 square meters of Petrie Island Beach. Be it further resolved, the council waived the notice of surplus real property available for lease at market rent section of the leasing policy requiring the city to notify the public of city-owned real property available for the lease for the additional 280 square meters of Petrie Island Beach required by the PICC. Two more, be it further resolved, that council delegate authority to the Director Corporate Real Estate Office to negotiate, conclude, execute, and amend on behalf of the city a nominal value agreement with a term of up to 25 years for 560 square meters of land for PICC use as identified above at Petrie Island Beach, 795 Twaddle Road. Last one, I promise, be it further resolved, that council delegate authority to the General Manager Recreation, Culture and Facility Services to negotiate, conclude, execute, and amend on behalf of the city a seasonal operational agreement with the PICC to allow for temporary mobility access to the waterfront to the mutual benefit of both parties at Petrie Island Beach, 795 Twaddle Road.
Thank you, councillor Lulov. I don't believe there are any other notices of motion. Motion to introduce bylaws. Councillor DeRus?
That the bylaws listed on the agenda under motion to introduce bylaws, three readings to be read and passed with the exception of the following bylaw listed as E on the agenda. A, a bylaw to authorize the imposition of special charters on 3 Lyell Street.
Is that carried? Thank you. Confirmation bylaw, councillor DeRus?
That the following regulation be read and moderation, a rule modifying the deliberation council.
Thanks, Mayor. River Ward's rat population, particularly on the west side of the Rita River, is significant. Approximately six years ago, water main renewal and roadwork redesign work on Dines and Prince of Wales coincided with a never-seen-before rat infestation at the nearby Carlton Square condos near Meadowlands and Fisher. They have spent $58,000 since the infrastructure renewal on private contractor assistance. The Central Park community saw an infestation in 2022 that overwhelmed many residents. And in Carlington, residents are reporting large volumes of rats in the neighborhood. Residents are requesting that the city assume a greater role in preventing rats from multiplying, mitigate their ability to travel from one neighbor to another, augment public outreach and communications on ways the public can assist in combating the problem and proactively addressing property standard issues in neighborhoods with higher-than-average public complaints of rat sightings. There are two questions. Would staff identify what best practices exist in any Canadian or American city where the municipal government has taken on a much more hands-on approach to rat mitigation and to comment on ways the city of Ottawa could possibly increase its efforts in this regard? And second, would staff also please comment if abutting the experimental farm in any way would increase a neighborhood's rat population? Would staff inquire if Agriculture Canada is engaged in any rat mitigation measures on the periphery of its property near residential neighborhoods? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Brockington. Just before we wrap up, I just wanted to thank my colleagues on council for all of your thoughtful contributions to the, to several important topics that we covered at today's meeting. So thank you, everyone. Motion to adjourn, councillor DeRus?
That the, a meeting be adjourned.
Thank you, everyone. Merci beaucoup. Bonne journée.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good day.
I would invite each agency in alphabetical order to ask questions. You may ask one question with one follow-up. When asking your questions, please identify who your question is directed to. And if you're in council chambers, please use the microphone. We'll now start with, nous allons commencer par Ismael C. à Radio Canada.
Mr. Sutcliffe, I'd just like you to give us an answer in your words. What do you think about the funding for homeless? And why, in your opinion, do you think you have not got your fair share compared to Toronto? Well, I'm very surprised. I'm disappointed as well. I'm disappointed that Ottawa's allocation is so low. I don't know why Toronto received $48 million and Ottawa only less than a million dollars. Well, I hope that the provincial government will revise its figures and will provide Ottawa our fair share of this funding. On a different topic, the wolf that was killed in Ottawa on Monday, what's, what's your reaction to that? Do you think that things were done properly? What situation? The bear, rather. Oh, the bear. Sorry, I didn't hear you. The bear that was killed on Monday evening. Well, I know that many people have concerns. I'm waiting for an explanation from the police on the situation. And I'll give you an answer once I've got that explanation from the police about what happened. Thank you.
At the Ottawa Citizen.
Hi. First question is for the, the team from housing. You're speaking about a $17 million operating funding gap to maintain current service levels. I'm not understanding how like such a gap would open up between this year and next. If we're talking about, you know, like a total spend of $47 million and just to maintain existing services, that seems like a huge jump year over year. Can you just help me understand what that gap is?
Yes, thanks for the question. One of the biggest factors is the end of COVID funding. So social services relief funding on the part of the province and COVID-related funding on the part of the federal government. That's really what has impacted us the most in terms of the ability to provide the level of support services that we do right now in 2023.
Thank you. And the ask now is for a proportionate amount compared to Toronto, you know, based on their allocation. Do you think it's appropriate that Ottawa should be getting like an increase based on size relative to Toronto? That seems sort of unfair to other cities and divorced from a needs-based approach.
We would, we believe that it should be based on both, on the size of the municipality, which reflects the number of people in need and then the scale and scope of need. The number of people actually in homelessness and the acuity levels that we're experiencing in shelters, for instance.
Is that ask tied to need? It seemed like it was just based on size, that, that figure being put to the province?
Can you clarify the question, please?
Sorry, yeah, just the, the ask being put to the province now, I believe it was what, 18 to 20 million? It seemed to me that that was just based on Toronto's getting this much. We should be getting this much based on our size relative to Toronto. Is need somehow worked into that? That wasn't apparent to me.
Thank you. So across the province, we are not suggesting that other municipalities across the province did not receive their, their fair share of funding. When we then look at the share that Toronto received, it is so much larger than what we received. So we believe that, we would like to see the formula that was applied to Toronto so that we can understand and also see the formula that was applied to Ottawa. If one were to look just based on numbers, then we have to apply a, a population lens to it. Because there's not, nothing else that would actually clarify for us why Toronto received as much funding as they did compared to us. And even then, we need more information because really, it doesn't make sense to us.
Thank you.
And if I could add to that, Taylor, you know, I think we're not suggesting that, that the funds be allocated on a per capita basis and not based on need. And, but if there were, you know, if this were a file where there were compelling evidence that Toronto had a disproportionate issue and a disproportionate requirement compared to Ottawa, then, then we'd be open to seeing the rationale for that. And we would accept an argument that, well, there's so much more of this issue in Toronto than there is in Ottawa. Even per capita, they deserve more funding. But that's not our understanding of the situation, right? So that our understanding of the situation is that Toronto's, the magnitude of Toronto's problem and the magnitude of Ottawa's problem are roughly speaking proportionate to the population of the two cities. So therefore, in the absence of an actual funding formula, which we haven't seen, we're simply saying, give us an equivalent share to what Toronto is getting. Because we, the magnitude of the problem in Ottawa is roughly proportionate to the magnitude of the problem in Toronto.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Leah LaRocque at CTV.
Thank you. My question is for the mayor. A little bit of a pivot. The city is examining ways they can reduce waste that goes into our trailhead, to the trail road waste. Would you support limiting the amount of garbage bags that citizens can put on the road? Would you support charging for tags for extra? Where would you, where do you stand?
We're just beginning this conversation. It's a really important conversation for us to have as a, as a community. And it's going to start with the Environment Committee next week. And, and, and we're looking forward to hearing what the public has to say about this. Garbage is always a very sensitive topic and, and there are clearly different needs throughout the community. We have to keep in mind the needs of urban residents, suburban residents and rural residents during this process. The number one thing is nobody wants to build another landfill. So we have to make sure that we are doing everything we can to reduce what we're sending to landfill to prolong the use of the existing landfill site for as long as possible. But I'm looking forward to the conversation and seeing what my colleagues on council have to say and what the community has to say about this as well. Do you have any other question, Leah?
It's for the mayor again. The idea of a nightmare is going to be in a report to the Fedco Committee next week. To, Ottawa's been known as the city that fun forgot. Do you think that this is a good idea to, to have this position of a nightmare to revive Ottawa nightlife?
Yeah, I would, I would call, I think, what are we calling it? The Commissioner of Nightlife? Yeah, Nightlife Commissioner, which is, I think, a more appropriate title. I know there's a sort of, yeah. There's, there's only one mayor. There's no weekend mayor or, you know, lunchtime mayor or anything like that. So, you know, I, I'm really excited about this opportunity. I've been speaking with many people in, in the nightlife community, the people in the music industry, people in the entertainment industry. And there is, you know, lots of opportunity, lots of potential and lots of enthusiasm right now for so many different things that I think would stimulate Ottawa's economy and make, you know, an even more fun place to live and to, and to enjoy the evenings and weekends. So I think there's a huge opportunity here. And looking at some of our policies through that lens of creating a more fun atmosphere in the city and also bringing more people downtown. I think would be, would be very worthwhile. Thank you. We will now go to Elise Sukra with CBC.
Thank you very much. And my question is for Roger Chapman. Thank you so much for being here today. So I think people in the city now have heard and know about the death of the, the bear on Monday, and people are quite upset about it. And they want to know what happened, and it hasn't really been forthcoming. So I'm wondering if you can provide some information about, you know, why this had to end in this way?
Yeah, thank you for the question. I can't speak to the specific circumstances that led to the putting down the bear. That's Ottawa Police made that decision and they would need to speak to that. What I can tell you is that bylaw regulatory services role, when we receive these calls through 311 is to assess the situation. So we were monitoring the bear's behavior. We were monitoring the bear's movement. We were working with our partners with NCC and MNR. We had live traps set with an intention of in the least invasive way to, to relocate the bear. Unfortunately, circumstances led to what occurred on, on Monday evening. And, you know, I can't speak for the police on that.
Okay, thanks very much. And I also had a question for the mayor. I understand, Mayor Sutcliffe, that you did go to Toronto to ask about this a funding issue that's, that's come up. And I wonder if you could tell us a little bit more about what kind of reaction you got when you brought up this issue?
I was in Toronto for a meeting with Premier Ford and members of his cabinet. We talked about a number of different issues, but this one was at the top of our list. And so we raised it with the premier directly, and the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing was there as well. And and, you know, we heard the explanation that, that has been publicized that came from the ministry in more recent days. But, you know, we continued to appeal to their sense of fairness and ask them for more information to help us understand why Ottawa got such a small allocation compared to other municipalities, including Toronto. So we encourage them to keep looking at it and to, to do more to help the city of Ottawa address homelessness. So we, we made our appeal. We asked for fairness. We asked for a fair share and we, we got the explanation that you've heard, and, and we continue to ask them to look into it and do what they could to help.
Sorry. And your reaction to, to that kind of response was, or is?
Well, I'm, obviously, I'm disappointed. You know, I think, I think many of us, when we first saw that number, we thought there maybe was a zero or two missing at the end of it. And so it's, it's disappointing. We, we do a lot of different things with the provincial government. I speak to Premier Ford on a regular basis about a number of different files. And so there is a strong working relationship, but on this particular issue, I don't feel we're getting our fair share, and I'm going to continue to fight and advocate for Ottawa's fair share until we get it.
Okay, thank you both.
Thank you. This concludes today's media availability. So si conclu le point de presse d'aujourd'hui. Thank you, everyone. Merci à tous. Have a wonderful Wednesday.